Good evening, everyone. This is Catherine Kramer, Town Planner. I'm in our development office. We're all unmasked in here as we are in a COVID pod and we have all been vaccinated. So just that as a heads up, I'm going to start with the roll call. Barbara Brenneman.
President.
Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Michael Garulis.
Here.
Matt Pogson.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz, I believe is absent. Scott Hallstad. Scott? Are you muted?
Here.
Hi, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Keith Weber.
Here.
And John Weber.
Here.
Great. And since we have Marcy Schwartz absent this evening, our alternate is Keith Weber. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Barbara Brenneman, Chair of Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I welcome you all to this meeting, May 10th, 2021. We're starting a little delayed. I'm apologizing for that technical difficulty, but we're here. And I'll ask Inez to do the call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission notices hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Mark Watson, application for special permit to raise poultry at 7:00 Fairview Drive R20 Zone. Patrick Roy's application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet and accessory apartment in excess of 650 square feet at 23 Bonney Drive R20 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website A copy of this proposal is online at https://www.farmington-ct.org/government/town-plan-zoning-commission-public-hearing-documents or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 29th day of April, 2021. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you, Inez. Just a comment, if any of you have the original agenda that we posted. Number four on that agenda for public hearing, Eliza Pennett has been withdrawn, so that we will not be hearing that this evening. So if you're there, if you're here for that application, it has been withdrawn. Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to reopen the public hearing for 402 Farmington Avenue LLC. Let it be known that this is a public hearing that opened on January 25th of this year. We are continuing this evening. We'll begin making a comment. If you're here to speak and to address the commission, please raise your hand on your computer so our technical whiz can get to you and get you permission to speak. It's important that we listen to comments and we welcome them. We are going to limit comments this evening to three minutes so that everybody has a fair share of time to make their comments, and that goes for all of us. So please try to keep that in mind. I'm going to begin with any questions since our last meeting that a commissioner might have, and I'll start with Patrick.
No, I do not have any questions.
We're going to start with public, we're going to start with public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to start with public.
Sorry, we're starting.
Beg your pardon.
Yeah.
So we're going to begin with public comment. And again, I would say if you're going to speak, raise your hand so that you can be called upon. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Tim Hollister. May I raise a short point of order, please?
Yes. Yes.
I would just ask if you or staff would put on the record what you have done over the last couple of minutes to make sure that every member of the public is able to log on. Thank you.
Certainly hope I can go through that. So it came to our attention that there was some individuals were receiving an error message that indicated that the host had the host had another meeting that was ongoing. So those in our office endeavored to ensure that we did not have another session of Zoom opened on one of our personal computers as opposed to this conference room computer. And then in addition, as we were watching, we could see that additional people were logging in under the attendee list. We asked Sandy Mashad, our administrator, to post a notification on the agenda, on the agenda, on the agenda on the website to indicate that to simply log into Zoom and use the web ID number to gain access to the meeting rather than using the link itself. So to the best of our ability, we currently have 59 attendees. And when I look at the attendee list, it is the list that I am used to seeing with respect to this matter and the usual individuals that have been attending. The list has varied at times, but some of, and these are not individuals that would have received a panelist link. These are all calling in under the attendee. So there's 2,900 attendee.
Okay, thank you. The Zatoujans, for one, had said that they had people lined up to speak. I would just ask that both interveners confirm when they start that the people that they want to speak are able, have been able to log on. Thank you. I'll stop here.
Certainly. Thank you for asking for the clarification. It was important. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we are going to go to public comment. And we'll ask that you raise your hand for public comment. And as Chair Brenneman indicated, that we are going to try to limit public comments to three minutes this evening so that we can move through everyone and keep the meeting moving this evening. Dr. Fitchman, your hand is raised. You're free to unmute your microphone and address the commission.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't think three minutes is going to do it. You know, my life is going to be upended and it's hard to be able to define points in three minutes. But you can just cut me off at the end of three minutes. Last time that we spoke, I spoke about reliance, how people rely on laws and different things and zoning regulations and how that was upended for my community. Tonight, I'd like to talk about need. There is a proposal before us by an applicant that's built some very nice buildings and done a lot of good in the town. I would ask the commissioners to think is an apartment house that is extremely dense and in people's backyards and zoning change needed. Is that a need of the town? I mean, we need schools, we need police, we need a fire department, we need our roads maintained, and there's a host of other things that we need. But do we need this? Is this a need or is this something that is a desire? The town, I believe, wants to capitalize on this health and technology corridor, and I believe that's a great idea. Not sure that a large apartment house has anything to do with that, but you know, I understand, and certainly taxes will be paid. I am unaware that UConn or Jackson Labs or the folks that work in the beautiful metro buildings across the street are having trouble hiring people because people need to walk to work. If people can't walk to work, they will not accept the job. In fact, the University of Connecticut has issued a letter which says they're neutral on the placement of this. They were just asked, well, seven months before the original hearing, significantly longer, would they support an apartment house in the area for their workers? Yes. They had no idea. Jackson Lab had no idea. Carrier doesn't even employ anyone anymore. So I don't think that the original blush that we got of employers kind of demanding this for their employees is actually true. In fact, the average salary at the University of Connecticut, and that includes high-paid people like doctors, like myself. Everybody knows I'm a very wealthy guy. And also the executives, the average salary is $58,000. If you look online and figure out what they should be spending a month on rent or mortgages, et cetera, should be about $1,030 a month. If we go by the buildings that Metro has, one at Steel Road in West Hartford, one at 299 here in Farmington, the lowest rent is $1725. That is for a studio apartment in Steel Road. Farmington doesn't have studios. And the two-bedroom apartments go up to $2,750. Now, spending $2,750 for an apartment sounds like a lot. The average family in Connecticut that has children, it's 1.93 children. Let's round it off to two children. So you would, if you rented a place for $2,750, you'd have to have two kids sleeping in the same bedroom. Well, number one, at that price, I think that's not the way society is these days. I grew up with two kids in a bedroom, but the other thing is if they're different genders and they get a little older, I think that's obviously not so hot an idea. The residents make $64,000. They have medical loans, so I don't think they're going to be paying for these kinds of things also. Then they talk about the ability to be able to walk. That's the big draw here, that you can walk to UConn, although UConn doesn't actually need to have apartments to attract employees. They've been around for many, many decades. We're told that although MapQuest tells us it's a 24-minute walk and I added an extra six minutes because it's up a big hill, we're told that if all the people that are going to live here are going to work at UConn and they're all in their 30s and they can do it in 10 minutes. I don't know.
Dr. Fitchman, we're at three minutes. If you want to wrap up your comments, please.
Well, the authority that any governing body has in the United States started with the preamble of the Declaration of Independence. And that is that you draw your authority from the consent of the governed. You have hundreds and hundreds of comments from citizens. Virtually everyone is against it. You really have no corporate demand for this. I noticed that Southington and Simsbury both had referendums and they both spent taxpayer money to buy developer rights. Why don't we have a referendum? And I would just say at this point, the landfill would be a great place. The developer could have their full apartment there. It would be on Farmington Avenue where it belongs. We'd get back our commuter a lot, and I believe that everybody would be happy. And I'll leave with a quote from the Rolling Stones. You can't always get what you want, but if you try real hard, sometimes you get what you need. I'd say to the developers, the landfill, you get what you need and you're not involved in something where you have to keep scaling down this project. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Jim Fetterman. If you can, Mr. Fetterman, you can.
Good evening, Council. I appreciate your spending time. Basically, I wanted to summarize all the.
We need your full name and address. That won't count towards your three minutes. Full name and address and then.
Jim Fetterman, 85 Prattling Pond Road in Farmington. And I wanted to, I went in and took an Excel spreadsheet and summarized all of the letters and categorized everything in the area of comment. And we got 280 letters of opposition representing about 310 people because some of those letters had, you know, a married couple or people that were living in the household. We had 17 support letters and four neutral letters. So of that, 62% were about the impact of traffic. I know the study says that there isn't going to be any, but I think anybody intuitive will determine that the traffic, especially going into Farmington, is backed up all the time. And any additional residents would create a clog there. They also, there's 38% said massive building is not in harmony with the neighborhood. We had 27% about the negative wetland impact, 25% negative wildlife impact. 22% were saying it disrupts the people on Prattling Pond Road and lowers property values, not just in Prattling Pond, but in other residential areas because of this kind of changing of zones. And then there was 19% that just were opposing a zone change period. I think the other thing I wanted to talk about was that we had all, you know, the applicant indicated that the community wasn't very offering other options, but I wanted to refresh everybody's memory that Dr. Fitchman did propose to put a residential site on those areas. But again, that was turned down for various reasons. Everybody is kind of really pounding the drum on Lomans Plaza, but again, the applicant rejected that because they apparently had alternative plans that didn't fit into this strategy. Also, we talked about moving the property closer to Farmington Avenue, and that would include the landfill area. And the aerial view of the quarry back in '52 indicated that they could place the building on an area that wouldn't actually be over the landfill. The benefits of this is that it preserves the wildlife corridor because what we want to do is we're saying that what would be great is we do a swap. That basically the Metro Realty donates the current property to a Farmington Land Trust, and then the city or the town donates the landfill area to Metro. So it's a direct swap. That creates a wildlife corridor and buffers the residential area from Prattling Pond. It provides contiguous wildlife corridor. So I think that would be really attractive. Recommends that the Town of Farmington landfill site be used, and that is there's no blasting required because it's already flat. The excavation funds that we're going to use for blasting on the previous site could be used to remediate the landfill to create more parking area, including the commuter parking lot. And this will actually bring the development 740 feet closer to Farmington Avenue and away from the Prattling Pond area and 30 feet elevation lower. And the benefit of that is that, that basically, you know, we, even though we still have the traffic issue, I think the neighbors in Prattling Pond area are much more supportive of this strategy than the current strategy. That's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, Kate Emery is next. Ms. Emery, if you could give your full name and address, and then you may address the commission.
Hi, this is Steve Silk. I'm Kate Emery's husband. I live at 74 Prattling Pond Road. I'd like to remind everyone that the area under consideration is presently open space. Once that has been clear-cut and blasted to smithereens, it will be gone forever. The site currently serves as a corridor connecting a loose matrix of preserved easement-protected open spaces extending from the West Hartford reservoir in the north to the Hillsteads property in the south. We know that the vitality and health of open spaces, resident wildlife, is improved and enhanced by connection to other open spaces. If this zoning change is approved, this corridor will be forever severed to our eternal loss. Sadly, this whole project has been cast as a zero-sum game in which there will be a winner and a loser. It doesn't have to be that way. There is a scenario which benefits residential areas, the applicant, and the town. I'd like to support my neighbor Jim Fetterman's idea that Metro Realty donate their entire site to the town or to the Farmington Land Trust, and the town in turn donates the landfill area to Metro Realty. Applicants already testified the landfill is no obstacle to development. This would leave open space open and provide an important, much-needed buffer between residential areas and the medical megalopolis the town is planning for the East Farms neighborhood. By moving the building closer to Route 4, it is no longer an interloper in a residential area but is more recognizably a member of the UConn community the applicant says aspires to join. I checked the 28th Amendment to the town's plan of conservation and development, which outlines a plan to urbanize East Farmington. I think, by the way, that the town should make every effort to distribute this document to every resident so we know it might be more aware of our town's intentions for our neighborhood. At any rate, the amendment states that regarding changes to existing zoning regulations, three conditions must be met. It says, quote, "Prior to approval, the commission shall find the following. The proposed is in harmony with the overall objective of the plan of conservation and development." Well, the amendment highlights as a primary objective the conservation and restoration of the natural environment, cultural and historical resources, and existing farmlands. The plan to move the site to the landfill recognizes that preservation of these assets is the most harmonious solution for the site. It also says, quote, "Number two, the proposed is superior to a plan possible under the existing zoning regulation for the parcel." Well, no one can answer this. The applicant has not presented a plan that conforms to existing regulations, so there's no basis for comparison. Lastly, number three, the proposed is in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties. There is no one who in good conscience can verify that the applicant's proposal is in harmony with the adjacent property owners on Prattling Pond Road. Literally hundreds of town residents have written this commission to express their agreement with these sentiments. Thanks very much for your time, and my wife would like to make some comments as well.
Hi there. I'm hoping I can get a reset on the three minutes.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm assuming there's zoning for a good reason. You know, Steve and I were driving through Bristol the other day, and it was sort of this crazy hodgepodge of buildings and it, I couldn't put my finger on what the problem was, but I realized it's a lack of zoning, that you've got, you know, commercial and residential and it, you end up with a spirit that is discombobulated. Farmington has a really wonderful spirit, if you will, and a lot of that, I think, has to do with the zoning that we have. And as Steve mentioned, I think changing the zoning requires some really significant thought. And if the only reason to do it is simply to get more tax income, I think we need to think of all the reasons why we shouldn't do it. And balancing that would be first and foremost, there's going to be huge influx of expenses related to that. But to me personally, above and beyond that, there is the impact on the town and the way it sees itself and presents itself and is able to experience itself as a town and us as residents to be able to be there. I love Farmington because of its open space. I love Farmington because of the, certainly not because of the traffic getting in there, but once you're in there, you're able to see a really beautiful and open space. And if we're turning this into some kind of metropolis, we're losing something huge, and I'm not sure we're getting something commensurate in return. So I would dearly love to have us all be thinking about why we're making these changes and not make them, and understanding the fact that if we make them, they're irreversible. You know, you can't undo that kind of thing. And we're talking about space that could be open space and could be left open for future generations to enjoy. And I think that's what's been part of what's special about Farmington, and I hope we can value that as much as we value some additional tax income. And that's all I'd like to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the Corsons. So Mr. or Mrs. Corson. Yeah, go right ahead, Mr. Corson. We're having a very difficult time hearing you at the moment. It's very difficult. It sounds like you're standing a couple of feet away from a computer microphone or something.
I'm right here.
That's a little better.
Well, what I want to say is, it's Craig Corson, 52 Prattling Pond Road. I'm here with my wife, Terry. I'm yelling. She has, we had mentioned, we, you know, we and the neighbor did prepare some things and we didn't realize that there was going to be a three-minute time limit put on. So being the closest and better, I'd appreciate a little extension in time. And you know, if we get too long, we just let us know, but we do have a few things you'd like to say. So Chairperson Brenneman, if that's okay with you, we'd like to commence.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, this is Terry Corson from 52 Prattling Pond Road. You know, a couple of things. The applicant highlights this site as an opportunity for creating a walkable live-work-play community for the envisioned neighborhood. We ask that you look beyond the marketing at the facts. Will this apartment complex really be primarily occupied by medical personnel as stated by the applicant in support of the medical corridor? The apartment can be occupied by anyone, not just medical workers. There is no way to control who lives here without discriminating against others. For this reason, alternatives to 402 Farmington app should be considered. We built our home here in 2003 to raise our two young children in Farmington. Our lot is R80 zoned and as is the referenced abutting property. Metro purchased their land for this project while knowing they were also an R80 zoned property. They bought it knowing that it would require a zone change for their intended use. If the Planning and Zoning Board approves this change, what will stop other applicants from altering zoning and impacting other residential communities? When will this stop? One of the commissioners stated at our initial hearing on January 25th, 2021, and I quote, "We are a unique and conservative town. We need to be careful about this project since when we lose the small-town feel, we cannot get it back." Close quote. I hope she still feels the same. Next, I would like to make reference to the seven criteria for the zone change. The first criteria is that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone is to be located will be protected. The applicant refers to this neighborhood as the UConn Health Center neighborhood. I think any reasonable person would consider this as the much quieter Prattling Pond neighborhood and not the UConn neighborhood, which is in fact on the other side of Route 4, much further away from the proposed apartment building. The applicant also states that there is no connection with Prattling Pond Road. Prattling Pond Road is on the Blue Trail, and we believe that 131 new families directly adjacent to the Blue Trail will find it appealing and use it on a regular basis. Visibility. The applicant states that only two of the homes are likely to have visibility of this project. And I find that statement somewhat offensive. Is the applicant saying that we in the Zatoujans are less important than the other 21 families on Prattling Pond Road? While the apartment building may be only partially visible, it remains only 218 feet from our bedroom window, and the parking lot will be less than 150 feet away. There is no amount of buffering possible at this location that would cause this project not to have an impact on us. Sound. While the building may be designed to help shield noise, the parking lot will be right beyond our property line and will be the feature responsible for the largest source of noise pollution from deliveries, trash pickup, plowing, car alarms, et cetera. What about the sound associated with the AC units on the roof for 131 units? The observation deck or the 200 cars coming and going? We also ask that you think about the construction effort for this massive project and impact it will have on our lives over the building period. Specifically, how long is this construction planned? Six days a week? All plans and presentations have been very focused on the finished product, but what about the year or years of blasting, excavation, and construction? There will be clearing machinery, excavators, bulldozers, dump trucks, disrupting not just the two of us, but the entire neighborhood. the two of us, but the entire neighborhood. This noise and impact is not in alignment with the zone change criteria. Also, the plan initially excluded parking garages, which have been later added in response to intervener. What impact is the additional underbuilding garage space having on the site excavation and blasting? These are questions that we continue to ask. We are currently unaware of anything being done to offset the noise and neighborhood disruption that this proposal will bring. In summary, the light noise pollution will impact everyone on Pratling Pond Road, not simply the two or three abutting properties, as the applicant states. Is this not evidence that the proposal will in fact blight or detract from abutting residences or other property? And that the existing and future character of the neighborhood in which the zone and/or use is to be located will not be protected? As residents, we ask you, how will the planning and zoning committee help to protect us from this massive change? The evergreen buffer that's 14 feet at planting, expected to grow two feet a year. The building itself will be visible well beyond the 14-foot trees, and as Steve Trinkus has testified, the trees are conically shaped, giving more buffer at the bottom than the top. Also, the canopy for the deciduous trees will likely hinder their growth. Will the buffer shield us from the parket, parking lot lighting? What about the exterior building lights? How many exterior building lights are planned? These are things we have not heard. Comparatively, this 45-foot-tall building will tower over the lighting at all heights, not to mention the rooftop deck and mounted HVAC units, which the evergreen buffer does not address. Density. While the density of the proposed, excuse me, the density of the proposed, um, project is stated that it's permissible in the limits of the innovation zone, this is a fact. However, almost 20 times the density of the R80 zone directly adjacent to this property. This would be a commendable fact if Metro's property were in an innovation zone. Unfortunately, they purchased the property in a zone that's R80 zoned. While the applicant has reduced the proposed building height to three stories at the closest distance to our home, which is 218 feet, the building remains four stories, only 231 feet from our home. How is this protecting us?
Mrs. Corson, we're about eight, eight minutes in. If you could start to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. All right. In closing, my husband and I did not expect to spend the first third of 2021 fighting for our home, but here we are. This battle, not brought on by any, by us in any way, has been extremely exhausting, stressful, and expensive for us and our neighbors. Please remember, our argument is not against the approval of an apartment building. It is against the approval of a zone change on the property, directly abutting the property we purposefully chose to build our home on. We would have never built here if we had any idea that the town had any desire or power to rezone the land in our front yard. We are counting on you to do the right thing and protect our neighborhood. I thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Didn't hear you. I'm trying to just thank you all for the extra time.
Oh, certainly. Thank you. Okay, I think we have, yes, Mr. or Mrs. Zaitushan, if you could name an address, you can unmute your microphone and address the commission, please.
Hi, yes, this is Kimberly Zaitushan. I live on 42 Pratling Pond Road in Farmington. I'm going to speak first, and then my husband has a few words that he'd like to say. My family is a direct abutter to the proposed development. We chose to live on Pratling Pond Road because of our lover nature. In fact, my son, for his Eagle Scout project, went before the Wetlands and Zoning Commission to get approved to construct an 80-foot bog bridge over the wetlands and 20-foot stream bridge in the Farmington Memorial Forest. The bridges serve as a barrier to protect our environment. In fact, this type of preservation is stated in the 2018 addendum to the Town of Farmington's plan of conservation and development. The plan mentions the protection of forest blocks. This leads me to the proposed zoning change that would involve destroying acres of forestry adjacent to our backyard, land that has not been touched, I believe, since 1930. Getting back to my children, did you know that we have box turtles in our, in our backyard? Did you know that they only travel at the most within one mile of their habitat? Again, you may ask the relevance. If Metro's proposed development is approved, you can be sure that the box turtles will cease to exist in this area and be eliminated. The loss of forestry and destruction through blasting and devastation of the wildlife corridor will undoubtedly be impacted. This is not in keeping with the plan of conservation and development. I want to talk about our neighborhood. We are zoned for two-acre lots on Pratling Pond Road. If the zone change is approved and Metro's development is approved, then the 130-plus apartment complex would be roughly 200 feet from our property and roughly 100 feet from the Corsens land. These numbers are an estimate because what we don't see on Metro's plans are the outdoor parking spots, nor, as mentioned earlier, we don't see the lights or the air conditioning units on the rooftops. How about the sewer and the water plans? If we had more time, I would ask that Metro's presentation be from the meeting of 423 be brought up, and would like to point out to page 10, you can see what I'm talking about. If you look at the picture, it seems to me that Metro's proposed building would be in the Pratling Pond neighborhood, and yet Metro is claiming to be in the Yukon Health Center neighborhood. Another one of the criteria for a floating zone approval is that the building must be in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties. If you look at the pictures, both the renderings that we did and the renderings that Metro did, those renderings don't look like any, anything like my house, Corsens, or anyone on this street. It's a big block composing of 130-something apartment complex. Looks nothing like what this road looks like. Yet Metro would like you to believe that somehow it does. According to, um, according to Meram Webster's definition of a neighborhood, it's a place where people live, uh, people live near one another, or and/or be a section lived by neighbors and usually having distinguishing characters. Metro's building is closer to us than it is than some of our neighbors to us, so that would constitute Metro being in the Pratling Pond neighborhood, not what they would like you to believe as being in the Yukon Health Center neighborhood. Lastly, the final criteria for approval of a floating zone is that the proposal, in this case, Metro's development, must be superior to plans that are possible under existing zoning. Metro has made no proposal other than a request for a zone change to build a large block of apartments. They haven't even presented an alternative to what works with the current zoning. So how can one determine if Metro's plans are superior to plans under the existing zoning because there hasn't been any proposal made in keeping with the current zoning? Desecration of the wildlife corridor and elimination of threatened species like the box turtle isn't in keeping with the P O C D. The apartment complex with the yoga studio and other amenities is in our neighborhood, Pratling Pond Road, not the Yukon Health Center neighborhood.
Mrs. Zaitushan, you have five minutes. Please wrap up for us.
We ask that the zone change not be approved, given that it doesn't meet the criteria for a zone change. Lastly, I'd like, I'd like to ask the commissioners to think about, to think about if they, if you approve this zoning change that calls into question the criteria, then how are you ever going to be able to turn down another proposal for a zoning change like this one? The zone change, a zone change like this one, without any substantial reason for approval, would open up the Town of Farmington to major developments by big business in areas where they don't belong or support the town's master plan. Thank you. Now, I'm going to pass it over to my husband. Thank you for the additional few minutes. Thank you.
Hello. It's Doug Zaitushan, 42 Pratling Pond Road in Farmington. We bought this house 21 years ago and relied on the zoning that currently exists, uh, that surrounds us. Metro Realty purchased the land that they purchased, knowing the zoning as well. I mean, they bought it eyes wide open. As a community, as a neighborhood, I'm, you know, I'm taken that the, there's so many suggestions on what to do, alternate plans. Is it really something that's, uh, we need to be involved with? The, the fact of the matter is, if the town needs housing, as suggested by Metro Realty, then they need to purchase a piece of property that's zoned, that people have relied on for decades, you know, in, in selecting where they live. It's, in my opinion, it's backwards, you know? And the only suggestion that we would make as a community is to, uh, for the commission to say no, simply say no. The, the, the land was bought with eyes wide open. It's not zoned for what the intent, the applicant is intending to put there, and, uh, obviously we oppose it, and zoning should not be changed to accommodate something. In, you know, who buys a piece of property and then decides that the, the zoning should change? It should have been purchased contingent upon zoning, a zoning change, and what's being forced upon us here is, is, isn't right. That's all I have to say.
Dr. Fitchman, go ahead. I believe you've got your, is your wife going to speak?
No, actually, I'm going to speak and take her time. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate you doing that. So, um, you know, there is a lot that is for sale right next to Anthology, which is 16.9 acres, which is zoned for senior housing, but I would assume that you folks would allow that to be zoned for this, and since honestly, using common sense, people are not going to walk from here to Yukon, I think that would be just as attractive, and in the work-play live zone, it's closer to restaurants, it's closer to Unionville, it's closer to shopping, so it actually is a better site. But the thing that I really wanted to address is that I have been an expert medical witness, and when you go to these trials, you'll see that there are two witnesses, one for one side, one for the other, and they both, both have credentials, they both make sense, they, it's hard to decide which one is really right, and sometimes nobody's right. So when witnesses come up and say that it's safe to do a tremendous amount of blasting next to a landfill that was open for 40 years, from 1930 to 1970, and I think anyone that has any knowledge of it knows that anything was allowed in that landfill, car batteries, anything, for many, many, many years. And when you do that amount of blasting through this enormous ridge, you're going to open fissures up in the rocks. Now, is it likely that pollution will escape through those fissures? It's probably not likely. Can it happen? I believe it can happen. And I will tell you that I do eye surgery, I think you all know that, and one out of 10,000 cases universally winds up with a terrible site-threatening infection. Now, that doesn't sound like much unless you happen to be the one. And my whole life really revolves around trying to make that 10,000 into 15,000 or 20,000. So when you look at that, or you look at Japan is a very sophisticated country, they, they built a nuclear power plant, Fukushima, they never intended for a, for a tsunami to come and, and just level that and cause tremendous catastrophic change. I think it's foolhardy to be blasting like this next to a landfill through tons and tons and tons of rock and assume that it's impossible, anything terrible will happen. It probably will not happen, but if it does happen, and having this commission and other commissions look at it, how will Farmington look allowing something like that to pollute the town, to create havoc, to create a catastrophe? It can be avoided. You can go to the landfill site, you don't have to do blasting, they can build the building there, it's a much more reasonable thing to do. I, I wish people wouldn't dig their heels in, let's see if we can come to a compromise, get the town the tax base it wants, get the developers the building they want, minimize the, the chance of anything going wrong environmentally, and also, you know, each one of us here, the developer at one point said it's only five homes. Well, there are five families. We don't want this to happen to us. We didn't build here, assuming that planning and zoning would decide to make a change that is not necessary. It's not needed. I'll end my comments there, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we've got Mr. Trantolo. If you could, your full name and address for the commission, you can open up your microphone or unmute your microphone and address the commission, please.
Good evening. My name is, my wife, at 44 Pratling Pond Road. When you first take a look at this development, you can see the developers push this project right into our neighborhood, not next to it. I don't think they can get any closer. And if you're trying to look at what's consistent, certainly a four-story building with 100 and so-and-so apartments is not consistent with the neighborhood. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, doesn't that five acres look good to be developed? Because you know, if you allow this, they're coming back for those five acres. When that question was asked, I think of the attorney for the developer, you heard the quintessential lawyer's answer, "Well, we don't know. We haven't planned anything yet," but you know it's going to happen. You know that this whole project is going to end up making this the Berlin Turnpike. Maybe they want to put in a massage parlor, or what was that, a tattoo parlor? We heard the last time people were trying to develop, certainly in a, an area such as this, that's now commercial, they would have a right to do it. I doubt this group is going to do that, but they're going to put something else in there to make this project even worse for this neighborhood. All you have to do is, when you talk about this, ask yourselves, what could they put in there to make more money? All right. My wife would like to make a comment, if you please. I, I see the rest of my time to my lovely wife.
Hi, this is Kathleen Trantolo. I would start, like to begin with saying, the applicant already owns numerous properties where this project would be far more suitable. For example, the applicant shuttered several local businesses at the Lowman's Plaza and turned an asset into an empty abandoned ice sword. It would be a perfect site for this apartment building, and virtually every reason the applicant has given for building this project would be better realized at the Ghost Mall site, whether it's walkability or proximity to the workplace. The project would be perfectly compatible there. The applicant says this building is part of the Yukon community, an assertion that defies geography. The proposed building, excuse me, is adjacent to and significantly less than 100 yards from the actual walls of homes in the long-established neighborhood of Pratling Pond Road. It is more than a quarter mile, as the crow It is more than a quarter mile as the crow flies from Yukon. If you were to blindfold someone and place them on the proposed site, then ask them whether they are at Yukon or in a residential area, I think we all know how they would respond. The applicant has also made much of the site's walkability. I am, I imagine, one of a very few in this meeting who has actually made that trip to Yukon on foot. And I can tell you that with no sidewalks, narrow shoulders, and four or more lanes of speeding traffic, it is not an inviting area for pedestrians. I am grateful for some of you on the commission took the time and made the effort to visit some of the homes on our street to see yourselves what the impact of building this colossal might be. I invite you back to take this walk to the Yukon campus so you can see for yourselves just how unpleasant it is. A letter on record from resident Cynthia McKay corroborates the danger of walking in the area. The applicant claims only two homes on our street will be impacted by this project, but the noise and light pollution will impact every home on Prattling Pond Road and the condominiums on Talcott Forest Road. The construction noise with blasting and earth moving could easily go on for more than a year. The applicant says residents of their proposed apartment building will not interact with, with us or visit our street. It strains credul- credul- credulally, excuse me, to think that the project's proximity to hiking opportunities on the Blue Trail would not be highlighted in its marketing materials. On Prattling Pond, the road is the trail. Many of us on Prattling Pa- Pond, excuse me, pay exorbitant tax rates, considering that we receive almost no services from the town. Our roads are not maintained or plowed by the town. We have to provide our own garbage pickup, our own leaf pickup, our own water, and since some of us are in a sewer exclusion zone, our own septic fields. So you might ask, why do you live here? We live here because of the privacy it provides, privacy that we believed would be protected by the town's commitment to its zoning laws. The concept of privacy is something the town recognizes has quantifiable monetary value. I know this because we have an extremely strict conservation easement over a portion of our property that preserves it as open space and reduces its market value to near zero. But we pay taxes on that land far in excess of its value. Why? Because in numerous appeals regarding our tax rate, the town has told us time and again that it is valuable as a privacy buffer. So by removing the privacy buffer afforded us by the current zoning, you knowingly reduce considerably the market value of our homes. Why should we suffer financial loss so Metro Realty can increase their profit margin? Thank you.
I would like to add one other thing if I have one extra second. Um, I'm not sure the sidewalks have been approved, well, to give my ignorance that they have, but I don't know that they have been approved. My question is, what happens if you give them this project? And the state then says, we're not building those sidewalks. That ruins the whole premise for their concept of getting close to Yukon. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have public comment to share with the commission this evening? Anyone else have public comment this evening? Okay, I am going to quickly, we have just a few pieces of written correspondence. Kathy Braga, if you want to unmute your microphone, you may address the commission.
Hi, I'm Kathy Braga from 37 Prattling Pond. I would just like to reiterate everything that my neighbors have said and, and just have a firm opposition to this project. That is all. I'll keep it brief.
Thank you. Jen Fitchman?
Hi, um, Jen and Ben Fitchman, 40 Prattling Pond Road. Um, we too want to reiterate what our neighbors have been saying. We fullheartedly agree with each of their comments and we oppose this, um, project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Any other public comments to share with the commission this evening? Raise your hand using the Zoom function and you will be, uh, addressed. I'm going to go to written correspondence that has come in since the, the last meeting. There were some that came in the night of the last meeting that I didn't get to, uh, assimilate. So they're here this evening. So this is a letter correspondence from Lorraine Libby and Linda Rom, who is on the screen. Correspondence from Mary Ann Gunning. Correspondence from Ray Hadu. Our email from Jim Solme.
Jim Solme.
And a correspondence from Yukon Health. And the next grouping is a letter from Ann and Randy Barton. Our email from Lynn Daniels. An email from Jim Donahue. Written correspondence from Mr. Corson. Correspondence from Amanda Layden. Correspondence from Lindsay Matt. And this is correspondence, sorry about that. It's just correspondence that came over, came in over the weekend from the Corsons. And from Steve Byrne. And a document from Mr. Pederman. And that is all the correspondence that has come in. So we can, uh, I'll take one more. Is there anyone that has called in that wants to make public, public comment to the commission? Okay, Madam Chair, I don't see anyone else wishing to make public comment.
Thank you. Uh, accordingly, we'll move on to the commissioners and any questions that they might have now that they'd like to have answered before we go on to, uh, closing comments from the intervenors. I'll start with Patrick.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mike?
Uh, the only question I have is just regarding this, this portion of the public comment and, um, the intervener petitions. Uh, after this is over, um, we'll have further time for questions with the applicant.
Yes, you will.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
This question could wait till later, but I'll just ask it now. Uh, just to be clear, did they, um, this is actually for Metro. Am I allowed to ask a question directed towards Metro Realty?
Yes.
Um, it was just mentioned during this discussion that there would, is really no connection for the sidewalk, but I believe in an earlier meeting, Metro had laid out that they were planning on connecting that and that was part of this agreement or that was going to be part of this. Is that correct? And I'm talking about the area across the street from, from this development. There was a section of sidewalk that was not completed, but that was being proposed as being sort of part of this project. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The area in front of Farm Glen on Farmington Avenue.
So would there be any area between this development and Yukon that would not have sidewalks available to it?
No.
Okay. Um, the other question was, uh, during the last meeting, there was discussion about, um, offering the adjacent, uh, property that you own, uh, as conservation easement. I believe there is an easement that was put in place by Inland Wetlands, but I, were you saying that it was going to only be that, uh, conservation or would it be the entire five acres as a conservation easement?
It would be the entire five acres as a conservation easement.
Okay. And last but not least, and this is probably more for staff, and I'm not sure what you can do for me on this one. But originally, the Baptist church that, um, had come in was approved to be put on that property. Is that, that is correct, right? Okay.
Correct.
Where on the, on the map, and maybe you could just use your cursor even to show us, where would that have been located on this property if it had been actually constructed? To the landfill.
So first, do you want to, I think you have probably done more. So it was more here, there was fields or something over on the far side, correct? Fields, like soccer athletic fields? So, uh, we believe the majority of the development was going to be located in this portion. There had been, um, an initial, I believe, some portion of this land used for athletic fields. But Bruce is going to try and call up the plan and see if he can get you a, uh, more precise answer.
Thank you. Sorry for, it was a, just a thought during this discussion of moving it closer to the quarry or having it closer to the landfill, uh, area. And I'm kind of curious about what an approved building that actually was approved on this property, where that would have been located comparatively.
That's fine. Understood.
Um, while he's looking for that, um, my other question, there was a question for, uh, staff, which was when, and I, I don't recall this myself, but when we altered the P O C D for this floating zone, um, was there, obviously there's a notification that goes out to the entire, uh, town that there's going to be, um, a zone, you know, change. But was there any notice that was specifically sent to the people of the abutting properties?
Uh, I don't believe so. When we changed the P O C D, um, or even when we were changing and doing the, um, creating the special innovation floating zone, the notice is, um, there, there's electronic notices done, uh, so our Everbridge notification and the newspaper notification, but specific butter notifications because it hasn't, it's not being really sought at a particular property. Um, so until it's sought at a particular property like it is for this particular application, that's what triggers the butter notifications. So there are legal notifications and it's, uh, it's posted on the website like all our agendas and it's, uh, the agenda is sent out through Everbridge. But no, there would not have been any specific butter notifications or mailings that were done.
So I guess I have, um, some issue with that. And it's just that if I wanted to say plant this zone, uh, and as you know, I like my hypotheticals and playing both sides and understanding this a little better, but if I was to try to plant this zone right now at number 400, I'm looking at that on the screen. Um, currently that does not fall into what the P O C D uh, has outlined as this innovation zone. Is that correct?
No, I believe it does. The innovation zone, I'm going to loosely say is the Route Four corridor. It is the, the, this neighbor, neighborhood. I, I know folks don't necessarily like the use of that term, but, um, it's, the innovation zone can land and I can, oh, I've got the P O C on the town website, but the innovation zone i- is applicable. It's a floating zone that is applicable within the Route Four corridor. And I believe even comes down into, into this area. It is also, it's also available off of Batterston Park Road and, uh, Farm Spring, Farm Spring, Batterston Park Road area.
I had been trying to look through my emails and all the stuff that we've got from a year ago, basically, when this first came to us. But I remember, I mean, the specific discussion when it came up about having that area specifically, which was highlighted as being part of this zone. And I recall that that was, it was a very odd shape. It was only that specific section. So I don't know that the area next to it was technically considered that. Um, but regardless of what, um, the, the point that I guess I'm trying to make though, um, is that when that was changed, when it changed in the P O C D, uh, and let's, there are plenty of other parts of our town that do not have that, uh, as a, you know, floating zone over them. So my question is, does the change of zone I, in the P O C D or, uh, uh, the addition of this floating zone over that land in our P O C D change the ability for us to, um, not have that be the new innovation zone if this was to go, say, to a, you know, a court? So if we were to actually not, let's say we denied this, because this specific piece of land is marked in our P O C D as the special innovation zone, is that going to give more leverage for the applicant to, um, to say that this is something that should be there? If it does, then I would argue that the abutters needed to have been notified when that was, um, when that change was made because it did change the legal rights that they had to their property and their abutting property. So that technically, although it wasn't a zone change, it changed the actual development rights because the P O C D changed. So I'm concerned about both sides of the legality of that for the people that are opposed to this and the people that are for it. Um, and I'm not sure if that's something that the town can answer or not, but those are my, that's why I'm specifically bringing this up as a concern right now.
So, uh, Attorney D. Crescendo is not on yet. We're actually going to go get him on the phone right now. Um, he needs the link again, so that's huge. He will tell you that the commission has, um, full legislative authority with respect to enacting a zone change. The P O C D gives you the ability to consider this zone change. It does not mandate that you make the zone change. All the other criteria that you have, there you go. Here's your special innovation. Sorry, everyone. I'm sure that's been nauseating watching me flip through this on the screen and I apologize, but, that's the best way I could do it while we were chatting. So that's, that's the Yukon Health Center area. And that's what is specifically mentioned as being allowed, the allowed area for the special innovation zone. As well as the, uh, 84, the, the 84 corridor, the UTC corridor along 84. So, um,
Specifically seeing that area highlighted, it may have been a discussion about what land in this area, it was still developable. So that may have been, uh, the discussion, but I mean, if I go back to the minutes and I had gone through some of the minutes earlier today, which are all, you know, recorded on YouTube now, um, I was able to, to hear me making the specific. I was able to, to hear me making the specific statement about this specific area being a, uh, an area that was going to be contentious. Um, and I know that it was highlighted when, is it? No, it's not.
That's the same area.
Yeah, no, no, it is, yeah. Um, so regardless, my concern again goes back to it actually changing the legality of, um, whether or not the, the land is actually now more zoned that way, if you will, even though, uh, let's say, for instance, a couple of times when we've had, um, other alterations made. Is that the picture, right?
So this is, so there's a couple, you gotta like, you gotta take a look at this in totality. So this is the entire section three of the uh, P O C D. So this is one page of it talking about the Yukon Health Center area. And then there was a drill down, uh, in this and referred to, there were three areas. So area one is the Quarry Road area.
Right.
Discussion. So there's area one, area two, area three, and part of that. And then it comes into recommendations. And it's, uh, recommended that a new floating zone be established to allow and encourage variety and flexibility in development. It'll be in harmony with the plan of conservation and development. The floating zone will allow higher density on the underlying zone, uh, and mixed use development by permitting multifamily and retail commercial. And the same parcel within the Yukon Health Center neighborhood is displayed on map seven-five, which is backup. And then it goes on to further say this new innovation should also be applied to the I eighty-four corporate office area, including U T C campus.
Right.
Go to seven-five, that's map seven-four. This is map, here's map seven-five.
And.
Five is everything in the, this catched area.
Right. But in that other page, we had a specific discussion about a three-story versus four-story building. And that's why there's, uh, that's, you had made the alteration because you ended up taking the place as, um, you know, as our planner, uh, and you had made the change to be a four or five vote for a three-story versus four-story building, but only, I believe, in the zone one, which is on the other page, if we scroll up again.
No, for any, so. When you look at the zone, um, it's not just for that area.
Okay. It, I thought it was.
So the text amendment was that we did this summer. The text amendment was for the special innovation floating zone in totality. And it includes, so that discussion that I just, that, that part I just read from the P O C D is pretty much verbatim in the tax under purpose. The floating zone is hereby established to allow and encourage variety and flexibility in land development within Yukon Health Center neighborhood and the I eighty-four corporate office area, including the U T C campus, as identified in chapter seven of the twenty-eighteen, uh, P O C D, et cetera. And then, uh, with respect to height, you are right, we made that, uh, five, six vote for height. But again, this is the special innovation zone aligns, the area aligns in totality with that recommendation that we're seeing in our seven-point eight.
And that, I'm, I'm trying to bring up the plan of conservation development on my other computer here so I can see it, but, uh.
Got on the screen.
I know, larger, it's kind of hard to see on the screen on this because I have it all split up and stuff. That, that helps. If you could scroll up, please.
Up, this way?
That way, yes.
Okay, keep going.
That brings us to that one. Lomans Plaza, the exchange. Okay, note down, I wanna see that map that you just scrolled by. Okay, so we have area one, area two, and area three, which are distinguished as areas that could potentially be developed. And they were written out as specific areas, although they all fall into that, um, into this area, into this outlining red dotted area. Specifically, those areas were outlined as specific potential development sites. Um, the point, I guess, again, i- it was more about during some of our previous meetings, for instance, the one on the corner of Munson Road, where, um, we did that development, I believe Mr. Ho had made it very clear he wanted us to make our motion, including the fact that this aligned with our plan of conservation and development to ensure that there was no, um, contradictory, you know, i- if it had not gone through, that that was still on record. Um, and I believe that we're in the same situation here. I was wondering, did you get Mr. De Crescendo, De Crescendo, I apologize, uh, on the phone or on the line?
Yes, Attorney De Crescendo is with us.
Okay.
Um, I am here.
Thank you for being here. Um, my question is regarding if this was to go through tonight, um, obviously, we are going to have people that are opposed to it and this can continue and vice versa. Those opposed, if this does not go through, it will go the other way. And, um, the applicant will be, uh, probably looking to find a way to make this happen regardless. Um, my question for you this evening is does the fact that this is already added to the plan of conservation and development as an area that's noted to be, um, to be developed in this fashion, does that change the zoning, um, uh, what's allowed, uh, for zoning there? I'm sorry, I, I don't have this written down, so I'm trying to come up with the exact question and phrasing. Does it make it so that if we did not approve this, um, we would have a legal issue on our hands because it is in the plan of conservation and development that this piece, that this property, um, should be developed in this manner?
I, I, I don't think so. One of the standards for approving a zone change, a change of zone, is the commission would have to find it was consistent with the plan of conservation and development. But if a zone change application is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, it does not necessarily mean that you have to change the zone accordingly, especially in an overlay zone like this, where you're also approving much more than a zone change or approving a site plan along with it. Uh, you're not, the, the plan of conservation and development does not obligate you to adopt a zone change. It allows you to change, adopt a zone change if you make a finding it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
That answered my question. Thank you. That was exactly what I needed to hear. Um, the other question goes back to if Bruce found the, uh, diagram or the, uh, site plan of the Baptist church.
Yep, Bruce dropped it into the folder for me. It's under Z.
It's the.
Where I'm in.
Yeah, just go to the. Just go to the, oh.
I am.
No, it's in here. It's at the bottom, right there.
There we go. Sorry.
Just look, keep going. There it goes, right there. That's all that lower portion. Partial, where the apartment is in the upper right.
Okay, was this the, is this picture of the proposed school or the proposed? Because the school, I don't, was the school not, the school was not approved, I don't think, right?
It's not.
But the church was approved before that? Okay, and where was the church going to be specifically?
Found it right there.
I can't, it's probably on my screen. So you guys are looking at a big screen there and.
Yeah, I'm saying soccer field, so. No.
That was the inside of the church, so.
With the, with the. To the ground floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Hold on for you.
It's the building, it looks like an umbrella.
Yeah. Yes, like, uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's our existing road, and it's kind of sweeps up to the right, and that's actually what's going to be used for this development.
Yes.
Okay, so this is down sort of, I mean, it's closer to the quarry, sort of where people aren't, while they're proposing, they put it right on top of the, the dump. Um. Okay. No, I think that that wrapped, I think that answered my question and tells me exactly what I was looking for. Um, and just trying to get a better idea of exactly what had been approved in the past already. So. Other, um, I think that's about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Inez, you have questions?
That was good. Um, I guess just for the commissioners, uh, Matt, you sent over some really good questions about density. I just wanna make sure that my fellow commissioners saw the reply from Shannon. I don't know if it's worthwhile going over, or I just wanna make sure everybody saw it.
Um, I can put it up on the screen. It was emailed to everyone. I can put it.
Matt, you saw the reply too?
I was the one who wrote the email, so I'll.
You saw the response though? Okay.
The responses, yes.
Okay.
I was just trying to get a little bit more information about the density when I sent that, and I'm glad it was shared with everybody. So that's good.
So they go, it went out to everyone around three o'clock this afternoon. So it's in your email, and then if, uh, as I said in the email, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions, if there was anything that wasn't clear or required additional clarification, so I'm happy to do so.
It, uh, the questions were great and your responses were great, so thank you. Uh, I just wanna make sure uh, whatever we end up doing tonight, what you think is super valuable, what we have. I don't have any new questions. Um, thank you, um, for, um, everything and keeping it straight for us. And, uh, the sidewalk was, uh, very helpful, so thank you um, for your time and the, uh, property owners for letting us do that also. No, no other questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Inez. Moving on to Keith. Keith, uh, you're gonna be sitting in, um, in place of Marcy. And there was some concern as to whether or not you had researched the meeting that you missed.
Did I spoke with Catherine earlier? I did review the minutes. I've gone through the share file, um, prior to and after every meeting we've had, I did get, uh, you know, I even saw Matt's email before this. I did a little bit of homework before he got in, so I think I'm up to date enough to, uh, you know, have knowledge on everything going on.
Thank you for that. Do you have any questions at this point, Keith?
I don't. I, uh, I actually appreciate Matt's, uh, Matt's questions. Um, the one regarding the uh, legality was one that I had as well, so nothing further.
Thank you. And Scott, I'm assuming you're still excusing yourself from this application?
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you, manager.
Thank you. John Viverick, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you very much. Um, at this point, we will move on to Dr. Fishman's closing comments as an intervenor.
Thank you, manager. Well, good evening, commissioners. Um, I, uh, first would like to say that, uh, I'd like to adopt the comments of Attorney Shansky in advance, uh, who will be speaking on behalf of the constituents. Um, she's going to be covering some of the, uh, areas that, uh, overlap with, uh, my own, uh, comments, and I'm not going to repeat them. I'd also like to say that, uh, I don't think I could do justice to the, uh, public comment that we heard earlier. I think they did a fine job. Uh, it was very powerful and heartfelt, and, um, I, I think, uh, I'll, I'll keep my comments short. Um, these are my concluding remarks, uh, on behalf of the Fishmans who are interveners and abutting neighbors. It'll take me about eight minutes, uh, possibly quicker. The applicant has another slide presentation, which you'll see, uh, shortly, and I'd like to address it, uh, directly. First, I urge you to go back and look carefully at the two thousand and seven P O C D through two sixteen, twenty sixteen, and the twenty eighteen amendments. Um, Commissioner Pogson, uh, actually directed uh, us to a critical point that I wanted to make, which is, and, and I think if you bring up on the screen, um, I guess Shannon, it would be your page eighty-seven in your documents, but, uh, the twenty eighteen P O C D, page three dash eight, um, section seven-point-five. Um, area one doesn't actually have a, a designation of live, work, and play, but it does indicate that for areas two and three. Area one being, of course, uh, the area uh, in question that, that's before you tonight. Um, and I think the fact that the area two and three specifically does get called out for live, work, and play, uh, tells you a lot about what the P O C D was thinking at the time, or at least the drafters of it was thinking at the time, that, um, that areas two and three were appropriate for residential development, whereas site one, not so. And the twenty eighteen amendments to the P O C D with a focus on the Yukon Health Center area preceded the adoption of the special innovation floating zone. And that's important because at the time, obviously, it was adopted, the P O C was, P O C D was adopted, the special innovation floating zone couldn't have been considered. Um, they were considering sort of more broad, broad concepts. So nowhere in the twenty eighteen amendments is high-density residential res, uh, rental units ever noted for the project site in area one. Um, residential is encouraged elsewhere and expressly, um, the area of the exchange in area two and Lomans Plaza in area three. In our view, these are clearly better alternatives, along with several other sites we, we identified. Our alternatives and, and areas two and three expressly promote live, work, and play and are truly walkable. Um, and, and I also, I, we've heard that the applicant says they're gonna build these sidewalks. Um, we've seen no demonstrative evidence or no, no evidence whatsoever in the record other than their say-so that they are actually going to build those. Uh, we haven't seen, um, any approval. We haven't seen any funding source or, uh, or really anything other than they're just saying, yes, we're gonna do that. And I think that's a a fairly thin basis upon which to, to make that determination. Um, I, I challenge the applicant, um, to make good on that, on that, um, promise. But anyway, it's simply unfounded to say that the P O C D and its amendments ever identified this site as appropriate for this proposed development. The P O C D's silence on live, work, and play in the area for site one speaks volumes. My clients don't, by the way, question that high-density rental res, uh, residential somewhere in the Yukon Center area would serve the public interest. Our concern is that this project is simply not appropriate for this particular site. It's too big. We can argue all day long about how much will be seen, who will see it, and who's directly or indirectly impacted. Um, but the reality is, um, there's no, never been in the history of zoning in this town that a larger apartment project has ever been developed, apart from the multi-unit Lakeview project with two hundred and fourteen units, spread out over twenty-five acres. And the Gables, a hundred and seventy-five units of senior housing on twenty acres. No single building, market-rate apartment project of this scale has ever been approved and developed in this town, period. It's larger than Jackson Labs. And you can't hide the fact that this is an exceptionally large monolithic structure, proposed partly in a two-acre residential zone and a restricted business zone that allows absolutely nothing as of right. Every single use has to get a special permit, enabling you to carefully tailor, you, the commission, to carefully tailor any development to its surroundings. Uh, and that's important. The reason why you reserve that kind of discretion, and as, uh, Attorney De Crescendo told you, you have the authority, but you also have the discretion to exercise and to determine what is fair, what is really in the best interest of the public. Important interest, e- excuse me, issues have been glossed over or not addressed at all. We believe, first of all, that standalone residential development, we've addressed this earlier, that are not part of a mixed use is not permitted by the express language of your regulations, the way you drafted them, regulations that this commission adopted. Second, we also have grave concerns about access, with the only access to this site being on an easement across someone else's property, which is not guaranteed to provide permanent access and which could be wiped out in foreclosure. Third, to put up a sign at Quarry Road, which is not a public street at all, but a private driveway, will never deter new residents coming and going there to avoid the traffic light. Human nature is what it is, and, you know, that's, a, a, a simple signage is going to be ignored. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, you, you can't simply sign away, um, you know, people's habits. Fourth, the idea that there's a sidewalk program is illusory. We investigated and can't find any evidence of any plans or any property acquisition in furtherance of sidewalk access. Um, and as I said earlier, the applicants provided nothing other than oral representations, which we can't find and they haven't produced. Metro Realty is a highly respected company for its work in town. Um, but in this case, they've taken on a site that simply doesn't work in terms of your plans, in terms of your regulations, and in terms of your responsibility. Not only to the immediate neighbors, but to everybody in the town of Farmington, who relies on your plans and your regulations to provide them for protection. Um, the protection of that promise that zoning has that that what they bought into, what they invested in, will be there down the road. They don't wanna, I mean, what you heard earlier is people invest. I mean, what you heard earlier is people invested in this community, they invested in their, their properties, and now they're feeling somewhat like the rug has been pulled out from under them. As you consider a zone change, I mean, you're changing essentially the rules. And while your P O C D says, yes, you can, you can do this if you find all the standards are met, it doesn't mean that that has to happen. So this is just simply not an appropriate project on this site. You know, what distinguishes the United States from other countries is our commitment to the rule of law. And the rule of law is a principle under which all persons, institutions, and entities are accountable to laws that are publicly promulgated, equally enforced, and independently adjudicated. The core component of the rule of law is the separation of law and politics. You, the Farmington Zoning Commission, have made the law that you must follow. You've also made the plans in your conservation and development. That's also part of the law now. And more directly and central to what you will now turn to in judging this application, you've made the law in your regulations. Your regulations regarding this rezoning and approval of the site plan are clear, express, and without ambiguity. When you make a zoning decision, as you're called on now to do, you are duty-bound to follow the law and in doing so, to reject politics and all other extraneous considerations, all the other arguments for saying, you know, this is going to help, you know, some other business, or it's, or it's going to, you know, beef up the tax base. You need to, to follow solely the considerations in the zoning. And instead, you'll follow the plans that you've adopted that comply, and you'll determine whether it complies with the mandates or the regulations that you adopted. This is what the rule of law requires. And you know better than I and everybody else here this evening. It is your overarching responsibility to preserve, to protect, and to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. You do that in applying the mandates of your P O C D and zoning regulations objectively and frankly, with a sense of humanity and caring for your neighbors. You know, it is, zoning is a, it is about expectations. It is about what's fair. There are rules, and, and if the rules hurt you, at least everybody knows what they are when you start out. But when you change those rules, like when you're asked to change a zone, you're, you're, you're changing course, and you need to seriously consider what those impacts might be. So we respectfully request that as you debate this controversial application that you have, that you address directly, each one of you, in your deliberations, the three criteria that are in your regs. Prior to approving, the commission shall find the following. Number one, the proposed is in harmony with the overall objective of the P O C D. I submit that the P O C D never suggested that this site was suitable for this intensive use. I pointed that out to you earlier. I actually cited to the page at which Area 1 was not designated for high-density residential, but Area 2 and Area 3 were. And so to the extent that you actually pointed out an area that was, and you pointed out another area, but you didn't talk about that one for high-density, sort of indicates that you weren't really designating it for that reason. So the P O C D actually would go in the other direction. Number two, the proposed plan is superior to a plan possible under the existing zoning for the parcel. It isn't superior. We submitted concept plans that are less intrusive, and would make a better transition from this zone to the adjacent neighborhood. Number three, the proposed application is in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties. In any common sense understanding of harmony, or the word harmony, it's just simply is not compatible. It's not harmonious. You've heard what people are, are talking about from the neighborhood. You've been there and you've seen how close it is. And when you put something that different, that close, that large, in close proximity, I can't imagine how you would, in good conscience, call that harmonious. So for each of these criteria, as you deliberate, we ask you to recite on the record individually why you believe the project complies or doesn't with the law that you adopted. We sincerely believe that in doing so, it's the utmost importance for you as the deciders, that you have great responsibility now, not only now for the people who are here, but also for the generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like intervenor closing comments on the Zetujin application, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman. I am attorney and members of the commission. I'm attorney Marjorie Shansky. My office represents Kim and Doug Zetunjin in this matter, 42 Predling Pond Road. As they have shared with the commission, they are immediate abutters as well as petitioning interveners in these proceedings. And their petition to intervene is dated February 17, 2021. Some of the evidence relating to the environmental issues about which they have expressed concern in their petition, and frankly, since that date, dates all the way back to January 2021, when the commission received Dr. Michael Clemens' letter and subsequently heard his testimony. Dr. Clemens focused on the relationship between the rich environmental characteristics of the subject property and its location within a trap rock ridge landscape, and the explicit policies, goals, and objectives stated in the Farmington Plan of Conservation and Development, recognizing the importance of natural resource protection and against which this proposal must be measured. With excerpts and citations to the 2007, adopted 2008, and subsequent 2018 updates of the plan, Dr. Clemens reminded the commission of very specific policies in the P O C D with which the proposed development is inconsistent and erosive to the existing architectural and natural character of the receiving neighborhood and deleterious to the natural landscape. Critically, Dr. Clemens, in describing the landscape and amphibians, reptiles, and other wildlife that live and traverse the terrain, drew your attention to the fact that this development interrupts an existing wildlife corridor by its placement and scale. He referred the commission to map number 14 for the two primary core habitats to the northeast and the two to the southeast, along with a secondary core habitat to the southwest, the only linkage between which is directly and adversely impacted by this very large project. He described that the results of such fragmentation are habitat degradation and local extinction or extirpation of populations of sensitive species, of which there are many in this area, and which are described in detail in his letter to you. I hope you had an opportunity to review that report between the last meeting and this evening. You must consider this testimony and this reporting about the provisions of your plan of conservation and development as you review the application before you. Some of the policies in your plan to which Dr. Clemens refers include, quote, "continue to encourage low-density residential use of hillside areas." Quote, "encourage residential development, which minimizes the disruption of ground cover and vegetation and which preserves expanses of open space in order to preserve the aesthetic and natural functions of hillsides and ridgelines." Quote, "natural buffer areas can be valuable in maximizing the preservation of a wetlands or water course." And with specific respect to the trap rock ridge, the plan of conservation says, quote, "identify potential wildlife corridors to preserve connections between separate parcels of existing open space." Quote, "preserve residential neighborhoods as stable, safe, vital, and attractive living environments." Quote, "institute safeguards to protect neighborhoods from the adverse effects posed by adjacent new development." Quote, "Parcels of land which are contiguous to existing residential neighborhoods should only be developed in a compatible manner, and in measuring compatibility, consideration should be given to similarity of uses, type, density, and scale, traffic impacts, hours of activity, noise generation, lighting, and design." And then on page nine of Dr. Clemens' letter, he begins to address the addendum of 2018. And he quotes it, section 5.4, "Certain hillsides contribute to the natural beauty of the surrounding area. This beauty depends to a large extent on the existence of significant amounts of open space and on development, which is in keeping with the surroundings and natural constraints of the land." Quote, "encourage residential development, which minimizes the disruption of ground cover and vegetation and which preserves expanses of open space in order to preserve the aesthetic and natural functions of hillsides and ridgelines." In other words, everything about his analysis of the plan of conservation and development and of the adverse impacts to the wildlife corridor associated with, with this development dictate against its approval. Not only does this evidence lead to a conclusion that the proposal has the reasonable likelihood of unreasonably harming the natural resources of the state of Connecticut within the jurisdiction of the committee, of the commission, as is alleged in the 2021 intervention petitions as a result of the proposed development, but these disconnections between the P O C D and the proposed development also prevent the commission from making the findings necessary under sections 31 and Article 4, Section 12 of the zoning regulations. And I would refer the commission back to my letter dated March 18, 2021, in which I provide an analysis of both of those sections. And I will also associate myself with Attorney Ainsworth's comments in order to avoid repeating some of his observations. The, with respect to wetlands and conservation and environmental protection in general, there has been mentioned over the course of this hearing that the Wetlands Commission and the non-regulatory Conservation Commission, which in Farmington has the identical membership of the Inland Wetlands Commission, has reviewed the application, and their action satisfies your obligations of review and regulatory and plan consistency and are dispositive on the issue of environmental protection. Madam Chairman, members of the commission, that is simply and emphatically not true. This commission, you, the members of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, must understand that your jurisdiction over matters pertaining to the environment and the consequences of this development is substantially broader than the jurisdiction of the Inland Wetlands Commission. Their jurisdiction is defined and limited by statute and decisional law. This commission, you administer and regulate in the public interest, in the public health, safety, and welfare. And you have the authority, and indeed the responsibility, to consider holistically the relationship between what is being proposed and what its effects will be. Development is consequential. Indeed, you promulgated Farmington's vision through the plan of conservation and development, and you regulate through the zoning regulations. And from the description of comments excerpted from the plan, which I recited earlier, it is clear that you have translated the, the need and the, and the interest in protecting those resources into provisions of your zoning regulations, and they are found in Article 4, Section 12, Governing Zone Changes, and in Section 31, Governing the Special Innovation District. Any deviation from the straight line through those documents to a decision at variance with their terms will result in an abusive discretion and an arbitrary decision and will not be a stable decision. And with that, I'd like to make a few comments about the floating zone. Ms. Rutherford said earlier that the commission has full legislative authority. And I would like to distinguish for the commission the difference between a garden variety map amendment, which I'm sure this commission has performed innumerable times, when either by change of circumstances or retrospectively looking at how neighborhoods or interests in use of property have changed, you may have expanded a commercial zone, or contracted, or revised the mapping, or the use table in residential zones. But I submit and describe to you that the floating zone raises a higher obligation of stewardship in the administration and exercise of your jurisdiction. And why is that? That is because a floating zone is subject to standards, specific standards. And Attorney Ainsworth recited the three standards in Section 31 of the regulations, which are mandatory to be met in order to infer or find consistency in the adoption of this zone with the Town of Farmington Plan of Conservation and Development. And we submit, based on the mountain of evidence that has been supplied through Dr. Clemens, through Mr. Pennell, through Mr. Miller, whose testimonies you may not even recall until you go back and reexamine them, and through Attorney Ainsworth, and through the heartfelt commentary of the neighbors, who will be forever adversely affected were this inappropriate zone to be landed like a spaceship, destroying everything underneath it. We urge you to apply your power of legislative authority judiciously and with a full consideration of all of the factors, most of which dictate, not all of which dictate, in my view, against the adoption of this zone. Finally, I also do not want to waive the issue that had previously been waived about the multifamily use without office or commercial uses, not comprising a mixed use within the meaning of the zoning regulation. I believe that question was directed to Town Council, who appears to have given some opinion to the commission that was not shared with the public. We maintain that the single use is not mixed-use development and ineligible for approval. But based on the, the plan of conservation and development, the failure of designation of this area of the Yukon Health District as being earmarked for residential development, and appropriately so, when we look at the environmental constraints and the importance of the biota there, this is a situation that really, notwithstanding all of the time that we've spent on it, lead to only one decision. Please, Metro, find an appropriate place to put this development. This is not it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I would invite the applicant for any closing comments.
Good, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. I'm attorney Tim Hollister. Please, as always, to represent this applicant, as I have for about 26 years. We are going to have a four-part closing, and it won't be that long. But it will start with addressing the environmental intervention petitions. And in that, I will be assisted by Megan Raymond and Tom Daley from SLR Consulting. And Ms. Rutherford has our slides on that. You'll then hear from Vince McDermott, who is a certified land use planner, former town planner. He is also with SLR, and he will talk about the Special Innovation Zone and Zone Change Criteria. Then you'll hear from Mr. Sager, and then I will wrap up with reasons to approve and a brief comment about voting procedures. So to address the intervention petitions, which were brought under the statute, state statute that we know as 22A19, let me just make these general points. Intervention petitions give petitioners like Dr. Fitchman and the Zetujins the right to present evidence of a claim of unreasonable pollution. They have exercised that right. However, an intervenor must make a claim within the jurisdiction of the commission that it is addressing. Wetlands and watercourses, no matter what Attorney Shansky says, are not your jurisdiction. There is a separate commission, the Wetlands Commission, that has exclusive jurisdiction over wetland and watercourses. And habitat preservation is the purview of the Conservation Commission. In addition, claims that must focus on, of unreasonable pollution, must focus on proposed physical construction. So you can't say, you can't raise inconsistency with the plan of conservation and development, which is just a policy document, and say that that is a basis for environmental intervention. That just doesn't make any sense. It has to be based on physical construction. So let me review a couple of the key facts. I would remind you first, in terms of environmental impact of the applicant's donation, prior to the start of this hearing, of 4.6 acres to the Farmington Land Trust. That has since been supplemented by the applicant's agreement to the Conservation been supplemented by the applicant's agreement to the conservation easement around the two vernal pools near the former landfill and the current public worksite. Supplemented by the applicant's agreement, if the site plan is approved, to impose a further conservation easement on the balance of the five acres between the land trust parcel and the development site. With all due respect, Mr. Trentolo was not up to date on that portion of the of the applicant's plan. But on April 15th last month, after several meetings, a site walk, and a five night public hearing, and lengthy presentations by Dr. Clemens and Mr. Logan, the Wetlands Commission determined that the development does not quote, does not present a significant adverse impact on any wetland or watercourse. And you have a copy of the Wetlands Commission's determination in that regard. Likewise, the Conservation Commission, after a lengthy presentation also by Dr. Clemens about severing wildlife corridors, rejected any claims that there is a disruption or severing on this site. I would urge you to remember that the Planning and Zoning Commission should review the wetlands approval, especially you should take a look at the wetlands conditions of approval, which the applicant has accepted. Those are modeled on the 299 Cold Highway proposal, and those conditions show an extraordinary town applicant, public, private partnership to work together to protect wetlands in the environment during construction, during stabilization, and continuing after occupancy. So this is not an applicant that in any way shrinks from its environmental obligations and deed in accepting the conditions imposed by the Wetlands Commission, conditions that have worked extremely well with 299 Cold Highway. The applicant has stepped up and showed that its commitment to environmental protection and wetlands protection. As you well know, the commission has excellent professional staff, and their purview includes technical compliance and engineering, including stormwater management and pollutant removal. Your staff has expressed no objection to the site plan, no issue of technical compliance, no issue of unreasonable pollution. And finally, just with regard to your review of the intervention petitions, I would point out that in all land use and environmental matters, evidence of claims of adverse impact must be specific, they must be quantified, and they must be based on cause and effect. It is not enough to use words like more, or increase, or change, or additional, or further. It is not enough to say something like, this plan will cause further degradation to water quality. Water quality is measured in physical characteristics. So an applicant, so an intervenor who claims unreasonable pollution must prove the baseline, they must prove the change, and they must prove how the construction will it will result in that change. They can't just say, throw out words in a general direction and say there will be a change and it will be adverse. They have, that's why we have experts, and Dr. Clemens and Mr. Logan did not come anywhere near being specific, quantified, or talking about cause and effect. Okay, now, Ms. Rutherford, we're going to turn to our slides that address the Fitchman and Zetugian intervention claims. And I would point out to the commission that both attorney Ainsworth and attorney Shansky did not, to my recollection, say one word about the specific claims of their intervention petitions filed four months ago. They didn't go through paragraph by paragraph, they didn't inventory the evidence that they believe relates to those claims. They seem to have beaten a hasty retreat from their own allegations, and I'll I'll come back to that. But anyway, Shannon, Shannon, if we could go to, thank you. This is what I said before, that what they are required to prove, and we go to the next slide. And this is the first paragraph of the Fitchman intervention petition. And now I'm going to call in Ms. Raymond and Mr. Daley to help me. So I'm not going to read these all, but I'm just going to highlight the key words. This first paragraph, 3A, says discharge of stormwater runoff pollutants into two highly sensitive vernal pool wetlands. First of all, that's not your jurisdiction as a as a zoning commission, it is not factually accurate, it was rejected by the Wetlands Commission. Mr. Daley.
Yes, for the record, Tom Daley. As Tim indicated, this statement is false because the project is actually discharging north or of the two vernal pools, that we are not discharging one drop of water from this development into the vernal pools.
Thank you. 3B, please, Shannon, thank you. This claims the current vernal pool silent science indicates that a buffer of 750 feet should be maintained to protect the integrity of the use of vernal pools. Ms. Raymond.
Good evening, Megan Raymond. I'm a principal scientist in the Wetlands and Waterways Lead at S L R. As we went through this at the Conservation Commission and Inland Wetlands and Watercourses proceeding, it was determined that the 750 foot radius is not the current science. It was never developed as a regulation, but as a planning document that has been since refined with the with the directional buffer analysis. I believe if you go to the next slide, we could have a figure of this. And this directional buffer analysis relies on the understanding that species do not move in non random patterns, but rather emigrate to and from vernal pools using linkages of preferred habitat. Given the existing configuration of the property with the Quarry Road existing to the north, as well as the low quality wetland corridor north of Quarry Road, we're seeing a directional buffer south of the vernal pools on the property towards a red maple swamp and a scrub shrub wetland. And that is the the case in this in this proceeding, in that there will be no impediment to the directional buffer and therefore no impact to the vernal pool. Thank you.
And then 3C, please, thank you. This claim, 3C, says that the applicant has done insufficient site investigation with regard to endangered, threatened, or species of special concern. Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, Attorney Hollister. Yes, this is, this claim is also unfounded. There was very detailed site specific investigation that occurred from the beginning in March 2020 through the application submission in November. The Natural Diversity Database, in case you're not aware, is a state, is a state managed database that identifies state listed flora and fauna, as well as critical habitats around the the state. That that database is consulted if a state permit is required, which is the case here. We need a stormwater general permit, given that the greater than five acres disturbance on the site. So that that database was consulted, but that consultation didn't in no way supplant site specific investigations, which carried the bulk of the site design and planning through the through the through this proceeding. Thank you.
3D, please, Shannon, thank you. This regards the detention basins on the, I guess it would be the southeast side of the development and the gas line, and stating that they will act as a threat of decoy vernal pools. Ms. Raymond.
Yes, thank you. Yes, these, we do have some detention basins proposed north of Quarry Road, and the potential for these these areas to be used as decoy vernal pools was modus, was addressed through the through the implementation of an Anamex fencing, which is about a, it's going to be a 24 inch fence that rides around the top of, or a barrier effectively, around the top of these detention basins that will that will disallow any introduction of species through this, through the stormwater management treatment train.
Thank you. 3E, please. This claim says the proposed project will unreasonably disrupt the wildlife habitats of north and south of the construction footprint. Again, this is not in the commission's jurisdiction. And Ms. Raymond, would you address that, please?
Sure, I believe the next slide might be more revealing to look at here. So this this concept of the site to being used as a wildlife corridor originated from a 2006 document, which is the Farmington Valley Biodiversity Document, which is what you see on the left hand side of the screen. If you if you look closely on that left hand, at that left hand image, we have a green star where the where the proposed project is located. And you can see this gray area is was designated as an interconnection corridor, which encompasses hundreds of acres that has this crisscrossed by roadways and houses and a number of developments. It's, this is not a granular depiction of of habitats. It's in fact quite coarse. And so what we're looking at when we look at the property is we're actually existing on the edge of the on the edge of the this this mapped area, but the proposed project in no way interferes with wildlife habitat. In fact, a lot of the or some of the site planning that was identified in this biodiversity project identified the the potential to use dense, how dense development and and open spaces as a way to manage wildlife corridors. And that's what we're, that's what we've proposed here with 6.9 acres of work on an 18.2 acre site, so 62% of the site is going to stay undeveloped. So we're inconsistent, we're maintaining consistency with some of the mandates or some of the the site design elements that were presented in this 2006 guideline. But but again, we're not looking at anything that's site specific as it relates to this designation. The wetland corridor is maintained, the the utility easements that cross the site are maintained, the site uses an existing access to gain, to gain upland viability to the to the project area. So we're not having any impediment to wildlife passage through the property.
And this claim was specifically rejected by the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Please, Shannon, thank you. This raises the Plan of Conservation Development, as I said earlier, this is not a claim that raises physical construction, and therefore it is simply not a claim of causing unreasonable pollution. So we can go to the next slide. Now, Dr. Fitchman had, in February 2021, had filed an amendment, an addendum to his original petition with a paragraph 2A and 2B. 2A claims that runoff is being directed into wetlands, and 2B claims that there is inadequate provision for renovation of form water quality. Mr. Daley, would you chime in on both of those, please?
Yes, once again, for the record, Tom Daley. The stormwater plan includes several best management practices to polish the stormwater before it gets to the wetlands. Megan and I worked closely together to develop this plan. It includes catch basins with deep sumps, water quality chambers sized to remove 80% removal of total suspended salads, vegetated basins, and a really a critical element, which we routed all the offsite stormwater around the basins and directly to the wetlands. As determined by the Inland Wetlands Commission, the plans meet or exceed industry standards as as to the water quality.
Thank you. And I guess I'm obligated, since Dr. Fitchman said it tonight, to quote back his own words, quote, pollution is probably not likely, unquote. That's what he said tonight, and we agree. If we now turn to the Zetugian intervention petition, 5A, we've highlighted the words the claim of inadequate to reduce non point source pollutant loads and reduce increase, does not increase, excuse me, does not reduce the increase in runoff volumes. I would point out that town staff, again, has not raised any concern about this. So, Mr. Daley, would you just comment on these?
Yes, as I just indicated, we've had, we did put together a very robust best management practices as a result to the drainage. We also did meet the town standard, which is a zero net increase in runoff at the at the wetland edge. These two references talk about that that they are contending that we were obligated to prepare pollutant load calculations, and then also that the project had to mitigate for runoff volumes. I would submit to this commission that there is no town, state, or federal mandate to provide these standards. We have met the standards that have met or exceeded the standards that have always been presented to this commission in their deliberations.
Thank you. There is no 5B, so if we can go to 5C, please. So the, this is not really a claim, it's it's a narrative about a report to the commission. There's no claim in this paragraph of physical conduct that would cause unreasonable pollution. This paragraph in verbatim was rejected by the Conservation Commission, was also contradicted by the alternatives put forth by Patrick Pennell, who on the same land proposed more tree clearing and more rock removal. But nonetheless, the site plan has been revised to the point where it was accepted by the Wetlands Commission. So Ms. Raymond, do you want to add anything on this one?
I think you summarized it well, Attorney Hollister.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. Okay, and then let's let's go to 5D, habitat fragmentation. Why don't you repeat your comment about that?
Great, as we as we described previously, the the proposed project does not result in habitat fragmentation, but in fact, result is a is a plan that is reflective of of a layout that's cognizant of the ecological attributes of the property. By positioning the proposed development at the furthest, at the northern end of the site, we're able to avoid any impact to water quality hydrology to the vernal pools that lie south of Quarry Road, we're able to maintain a connective open space area that exists south of the of the of the work area, resulting in approximately 62% of the site is open space. So in that regard, we have no impact on wildlife corridors or habitat fragmentation. The connectivity will be maintained with the proposed development. Thank you.
And 5E refers to claim of further degradation of the two vernal pools, severing of the interconservation area connection. We've essentially addressed these before. This is not within the jurisdiction of this commission. Further degradation, quote unquote, is not quantified or specified. Tom and Megan, do you have any further comment on this one?
The only thing I would comment is just to give the the commission orientation that actually the vernal pools are south of Quarry Road, so and our stormwater basin is on the other side. So there is not only just, you know, physical, but there's there's barriers in between. So that goes to even diminish the ability for this, the the basins to act as decoy vernal pools.
And then finally, 5F. 5F is another claim about the Plan of Conservation Development, so this is not a proper claim of unreasonable pollution under the intervention statutes. So those are our responses on the 2219 intervention petitions. And now I'd like to call on Vince McDermott to address the rezoning and special innovation zone criteria. Vince McDermott, are you there?
Vince, you're muted. Still on mute. There you go.
Okay. Shannon, thanks for helping out here. My name is Vince McDermott. I have a, I'm a certified planner, was a chartered member of the American Institute of Planners back in 1978, and have been practicing for over 50 years. I have a graduate degree from University of Massachusetts, as well as doctoral studies at in urban planning from Rutgers University. Anyway, my role here is to go back and summarize the consistency with the Plan of Conservation Development as it relates to the special innovative floating zone and how it gets implemented on this site. May I have the next slide, please, Shannon? I'm going to go through some history. The notion of this site being something other than residential is not new. It goes back at least to 2008. And here in this illustration, it shows that institutional use, namely the church, clearly not single family residential, as one might describe it. Interesting in that Plan of Conservation Development, for the first time, I believe, the notion of of what was the Yukon Health Center neighborhood was described, it was not mapped, was described as properties, in this particular case, being easterly of the residential properties on Prattling Pond Road. The, so the notion of having something other was continued, if I can have the next slide, in the 2018 P O C D, and I'm not going to elaborate on this because Mr. Pogson had a great discussion as to what these boundaries are. And again, you can see that the proposed site falls within the notion of supporting development and activities already and future development in the Yukon Health Center neighborhood. The amendment in 2016, going back slightly, covered elsewhere in the The amendment in 2016, going back slightly, covered elsewhere in the Health Center neighborhood. And if I could have the next slide, which I think is important. The 2018 specifically addressed sub-areas and neighborhoods. Neighborhoods not only in this Yukon Health Center, but other neighborhoods in town. So the focus built on prior P O C Ds, and in this case, identified three areas that were certainly capable of supporting development. And you can see the quote, "The areas can support significant development, which would establish the 24-hour community to be extremely beneficial to the economic well-being of Farmington." I think if you look at some of the text in the P O C D, also related to this area, there was clearly lacking a supply of modern, high-tech, high-efficient, small rental apartments. And so I think that because that is, is applicable to this site, and that's exactly what is being proposed here. Can I have the next slide, please? So without belaboring the point, the commission, in its wisdom, then recommended very specifically the enabling of the special innovation floating zone within the boundaries that you can see on this map. So this is nothing new. You've been working with it. The area one can, includes the applicant's property. It is indeed quite developable, and I use that in quotes, because it recognized the topographic and wetland challenges. And as you just heard from my colleagues, Megan Raymond and Tom Daly, we have met those challenges in the design of the project. So not only are we within the area, we have overcome the challenges and done better and are not impacting environmental issues. Next slide, please. So the commission, properly so, set three criteria. We've heard them earlier tonight. The project has to be in harmony with the P O C D, superior to the plans that are possible under the existing zone, and in harmony with the actual unpermitted development of adjacent properties. Understand that the adjacent properties are not just to the west, but they're also to the north and to the east and to the south. So if I can have the next slide, if you don't mind. So I think we're up to slide seven. Yeah. So the P O C D has its stated purposes. A future land use is identified as something other than R80. Elsewhere in the regulations, high-density housing, when you have slopes of less than 10%, where we are, we have public sewer, water, we have access to the arterial roadway. And I think this is important to serve as a transition between dissimilar uses. Can I go to the next slide? If you notice on this particular slide, we have, and I'm not telling you anything new. You have R80 to the west and to the south, but you also have multifamily to the north, and you have business restricted. So there are other uses that could occur on this site under existing zoning. It's not just residential. You could have a myriad of uses that may not be compatible with anything. You are nearby, you have multifamily housing to the north, you have laboratories in the B R zone. And so, so to argue that this is only residential is not correct. So what we're proposing here, what is being proposed, is something that is in a transition. I point to this map also because the history of development along Farmington Avenue has been non-residential or multifamily between Prattling Pond and Metacomet and so on for a whole mile, about a mile from this intersection all the way up past Talcott Knott. So, so the, so what we're talking about here is certainly something that is compatible with the neighborhood in which it, in which it exists. These plans could be something else, but multifamily is a use that is compatible between residential uses, single-family residential and non-residential uses closer to the, to the road. So. The next slide, please. So without repeating myself very much, we have actual and permitted uses that could occur that are of equal intensity, greater intensity perhaps, commercial in nature rather than residential. And so therefore, in terms of the floating zone and landing here, we are, we believe that we certainly are in harmony with the permitted development of the adjacent properties. Again, not all properties have to be considered, but certainly with the orientation of this site and the activities toward Farmington Avenue and the notion of, of, of being within the Yukon Health Center neighborhood needs to be considered when looking at this particular criteria. But you also, next slide, please. You also have seven other criteria elsewhere that I need to be considered. So not to belabor the point, while, you know, it isn't worth talking too much about what's the neighborhood and what isn't. This project does recognize the folks on, on residential properties on Prattling Pond. As you've heard earlier in the testimony, there's no vehicular or pedestrian connection to Prattling Pond. The visibility, I don't want to bore you, but you saw many slides and much discussion about the visit, the visual impacts or lack thereof between the properties on, on Prattling Pond to the development. It's only partial, partially visible, in part because of the great difference, the extensive buffer of the existing woods. One point on the buffer that I heard earlier this evening that's worth a comment. It is true that many of the trees that were proposed are conical initially, but they, they, they grow rapidly, they grow evenly, and they are not going to be interfered with by existing tree canopy. The tree canopy, these are on the edge of the property that the developer is already working on and not in the existing forest to the extent that one might believe. And then by virtue of the design of the building, the sound is shielded by the single building design rather than multiple buildings. Next slide, please. Adequate safeguards to protect adjacent properties. You've heard others say that this, the intentionally designed to be 14 to 24 foot below the abutting property. The evergreen buffer, you've heard talk about that. So again, consider that in terms of, of safeguarding neighborhood. Sound shielding, again, the single building design, common elements in terms of the buildings encompassed in the, in, in the central courtyard. The density of half the permissible limit in an innovation zone. We're not, the proposal here is not maxing out what could be permitted at all. It's fitting it into the site comfortably. And obviously, you heard that there is a reduction. At the last meeting, you heard a discussion that a part of the building will be lowered, particularly the sides next to the adjacent residential properties. Next slide, please. Traffic circulation, you heard earlier that, and the traffic, and with no objection from anyone else, a technical objection, traffic circulation in the site lines meet or exceed the standards that are set forth for intersection site distances along Farmington Avenue. And internal site circulation has been reviewed by your professional staff, and I'm sure we would have long heard if there were deficiencies in the, in the circulation plan for this development. So we have those site distances for all the proposed and existing driveways. Next slide, please. So the road network, including adjacent intersection impacted by proposal development, will be capable or satisfactorily handling increasing traffic generation. Mark Vatucci gave an initial presentation, followed by a second presentation, that Farmington Avenue and the relevant intersections have adequate capacity. Next. So. That the basic design and the proposed use of a building in relationship between the buildings and the land and the overall physical appearance of proposed use will be generally in harmony characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. And will not serve to blight the, or detract from abutting residences. A building of the quality that is proposed here is certainly, no one could suggest that it would be a blight. In harmony does not mean that it has to match the materials and the architecture of every building around it. But in the basic design, we have an enhanced buffer. We have building setbacks, 100 feet versus the 40. We have shielding due to the single-family design, the central courtyard, no connectivity and so on. So that's the basic design. The building has been set below the grade of the abutting residences and therefore absorbs some of the height. And I think, I think, I just saw the next slide here. I think one of the physical appearances of brick and other siding material are widely used elsewhere in town. We have an extensive landscaping plan. The building will not be visible from abutting residences other than the two that had been identified. Next slide, please. I think this is a point that is, was mentioned but glossed over. Multifamily housing has been used and has coexisted in harmony with single-family housing throughout the town. Right next to us, Talcott Forest, Talcott Ridge, Talcott Glen, all adjacent to Prattling Pond, Metacomet, and so on. So, so that's a, a, a design idiom, so to speak, or a planning policy, I guess for lack of a better word, that has been followed by this commission and your predecessors for many years. Metro Realty's 299 Colt Development, Colt Highway Development has multifamily and single-family adjacent to each other. Up on Papua Hill for very large expensive, you know, expansive homes, to say the least, and it's compatible. Others in town, you know, the Fieldstone Run Loop Road with a single-family on the outside and multifamily in the inside. I could go on, but the point is that you know your town and you know where single-family houses and multifamily dwellings are compatible. And in, in, in Metro Realty's case, with 299 Colt Highway, that very similar project. And it's been in existence of maybe six, seven years now. And you don't hear, your planning and zoning staff would, I'm sure, let you know if there were issues with the mixing of multifamily and adjacent single-family. Next slide, please. So that in the case where the application proposed increased building density over permitted existing zone, other features, natural topography and so on, needs to be considered. So in the part of this property, under 10% average slope, and that's certainly elsewhere in your P O C D, fits the definition for very high-density housing. You heard Megan Raymond a few minutes ago refer to certain maps and also natural resource attributes. The mapping in your P O C D does not contain, this site does not contain prime agricultural soils, is not in a floodplain, not in a stratified drift aquifer, and it is not in the primary, secondary core habitat in Farmington Valley biodiversity study. It's not in the ridgeline. I heard earlier this evening, oh, you know, protection of the ridgeline, the trap rock ridgeline. The maps and, and your own regulations, this is not in the ridgeline setback zone. Initially, there was 4.65 acres of land being donated for permanent conservation. And now you heard last meeting and reiterated by the applicant earlier that they're proposing to set aside an additional five acres into permanent conservation. And you heard Mr. Hollister say that there was unanimous recommendation by the Conservation Commission and unanimous approval for the, by the inland wetlands and water courses commission. So I think the question of adequate safeguards have been taken to protect the natural environment. That criteria has been satisfied. Next slide, please. And finally, all public services are available. Sewer, water, roads have recently been, been constructed. So I think that when you look at, at what has been presented and compare them to the criteria, the three specific for the floating zone, and the seven general criteria for all zone changes in your town, you will find that this proposal will meet those criteria. Tim?
Thank you, Vince. Jeff Sager, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Jeff Sager, 15 White Oak Road. Madam Chair, members of the Farmington Planning and Zoning Commission. During the course of this hearing, we listened to the comments, and we've worked consistently and deliberately to answer many important questions and to make this a better plan. We offered the testimony of seven different experts. We changed all the buffer trees to evergreens. We added a six-foot privacy fence. We increased the quantity of the buffer trees to 20 every 100 feet. And then we increased their size from a required six to eight feet to 14 feet. We've offered 100 trees off-site screening, if that's desired. We're proposing to add sidewalks in front of Farm Glen. We eliminated the fourth story closest to the residences. We offered to place into conservation for perpetuity five acres of adjacent land. We believe we have demonstrated our commitment to meaningfully improving this plan. But the main benefit to the neighborhood is that this proposal has no connection to Prattling Pond. We add no cars, we add no people. And because of that, the usual impacts of introducing a development directly into a neighborhood simply don't exist here. And what you are left with is what will the neighborhood see and what will the neighborhood hear? What will the neighborhood see? 20 of the 23 homes in Prattling Pond will have no view of the proposed building. Two or three homes would have a partial view of one floor of the proposed building. All of our proposed screening enhancements taken together would be very effective, and we prepared renderings to capture what these residents would see, which is one floor of a building. And then the accuracy of these renderings was verified by town staff. What will the neighbors hear? First, let's look at the use. The use we're proposing is a transitional, quiet, multifamily residential use. A community that would be home to hard-working professionals predominantly in the field of healthcare. No one has argued that there'll be any significant noise from our residents. Further, our proposal is designed such that all the outdoor activities are proposed to be contained within the four walls of the building. We gave the illustration of 299 Colt Highway. But as has been demonstrated in and around neighborhoods throughout Farmington for decades, residents of our town's multifamily communities are hardworking and respectful. They quietly enjoy living in town adjacent to, and sometimes directly within, single-family neighborhoods with no conflict. So given that the proposed community would generate no vehicular or pedestrian traffic onto any residential street, and given that the multifamily use is demonstrated to be a quiet, respectful use, and the visibility from even the closest neighbor has been carefully limited to a partial view of one floor of the building, we do not see how the proposed community could cause the problems that are alleged. The original thesis for the innovation zone, to support the innovation ecosystem that exists here, remains intact. And whether it's a publicly traded company or a small startup company, the common element in all of their mission statements is innovation. and the imperative that they bring the best talent available to the mission. We all know that because of the commitment of some of you and of those who came before us, we have a legacy of iconic American companies, medium and small-sized companies, groundbreaking scientific research, a state hospital, and a network of healthcare providers, all within close proximity of our proposed site. And this corporate and institutional presence isn't at the expense of our residential community. Rather, it benefits our residential community because they provide good jobs, they provide medical services of every kind imaginable, and pay for a significant portion of our schools and town services. Many employees ranging from hourly workers to CEOs live here in town, supporting home prices and actively contributing to the fabric of our community. And we know that they overwhelmingly support the development of modern, convenient rental housing for employees and those they hope to recruit here. And we want these recruits to live here, and we want the companies and institutions to stay. We want them all to thrive. And in the Health Center neighborhood, this innovation also provides a profound societal impact, whether it be scientists collaborating on hundreds of potential breakthrough cures and therapies for disease, or the healthcare professionals at the medical center providing exceptional medical care 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. As I offered on the very first night of these hearings, over the last 20 years, this commission has partnered with institutions, the Town Council, state government, private developers, to make this neighborhood what it is today. All of us, together, working as partners, we brought world-class medical care for all Farmington residents to our hometown to serve our residents in what can be a family's time of greatest need. And all residents of the town of Farmington benefit from the world-class medical care available in this neighborhood. So we are proposing to build a walkable housing community for the innovators, the entrepreneurs, the researchers, the scientists, and the healthcare professionals who are the lifeblood of what we call the innovation zone. The Medical Center campus in Jackson are right across the street. The 50-plus companies comprising the Technology Incubation Program are next door, and we share the same driveway. Our community will provide these professionals and others who want to live in Farmington with a choice. Because for those who prefer to rent or those who need to rent, this community would substantially improve the diversity of housing options available in the Health Center neighborhood and in the town as a whole. And if given the opportunity to build our community, we will play the role of an accelerator in the recruitment of talent, and we will improve the way that people connect in this neighborhood. When you establish the innovation zone, you did so to plan for tomorrow. And when we look to tomorrow, it's with the realization that as strong as we are in this neighborhood, everything is fragile in a disruptive world, and we need to support this ecosystem because it's the right thing to do and it greatly benefits all Farmington residents. We hope the community we are proposing begins that tomorrow. Thank you very much for listening. Tim?
Thank you, Jeff. Let me first thank the commission on behalf of the applicant for your limitless patience and close attention. There's no doubt that you have listened carefully, and I will say we were absolutely thrilled to see the questions that were posed by Commissioner Proxson and the staff responses. I mean, that was a great testimony to the attention to detail and the thoughtful consideration that the commission and staff are giving. And I will tell you also, you know, I do this for a living and I do probably like Attorney Shansky and Attorney Angworth, seven or eight hearings a month, and it's not every town where the hearings and the flow of information and the sense of procedural fairness is evident. So you, Farmington, are well-served by your staff and they deserve a great deal of credit for keeping, keeping the trains running on time and smoothly and fairly. What I want to do to wrap up our presentation and this hearing four and a half months after it started is to give you reasons to approve subtitle, "How to Think About This Application." And the starting points, as Mr. McDermott suggested, the P O C D from 2018 says, no matter how you slice it, the Yukon Health Center neighborhood needs to build on its success by adding high-tech, moderately-priced, small rental apartments, and multifamily residential is a recognized transition use between single-family residential and office, commercial, and institutional. That is exactly the plan that is in front of this commission. So let's go back to the beginning of this hearing in January. Please recall that when we started, the public and some members of the commission voiced a litany of concerns. Methane, explosions, rock removal, fractures, hillside seats, groundwater direction, toxic landfills, and drinking water protection. So where have we gotten since January? Well, first is, and not insignificantly, I think I can say without challenge that we have full and undisputed compliance with every single criterion in the special innovation zone regulation. The plan before you meets, the property is eligible for special innovation rezoning. We meet the minimum lot size, we are proposing one of the permitted uses. We meet the density, yards, buffers, setback, water and sewer availability, emergency vehicle access, impervious coverage, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, sidewalks, waste and recycling, design standards, green amenities, and finally, wetlands permit and Conservation Commission approval. That is a not insignificant list, and I don't believe there's any dispute. I don't believe I've heard any dispute about our compliance with that long list of criteria. Environmental. As you've heard, the wetlands permit has been issued, finding of no significant adverse impact. Conservation Commission, no wildlife habitat disruption in the area to the west of the site. Geotechnical. We spent two nights trying to convince you, I hope we did, that all the concerns about methane, the landfill, subsurface conditions, fractures, earth material excavation, impacts on drinking water, put to rest by experts testifying after investigation and analysis. Traffic. You heard from one traffic engineer in this proceeding, Mark Vertucci. He is a recognized expert in his field, and he demonstrated without challenge that there will be no impact, not only to Pratling Pond Road, but given the millions of dollars of investment in infrastructure and road improvements surrounding the subject property, there will be a negligible and unnoticed effect on Farmington Avenue and nearby intersections, even if we assume that no one will walk to the Yukon Medical Campus. Now, we've learned about the history of the site. For decades, it has been cleared and disturbed. I believe there was a comment tonight that it's not been touched since the 1930s. That's not true. For decades, this area has been home to a quarry and a landfill. Today, it is adjacent to a still-active public works facility, home to a gas transmission line. It has sewer, water, and gas. It has access to a traffic light. It abuts two office and research development facilities, and it's across the street, of course, from medical offices and a major medical center. And as Commissioner Proxson led Ms. Rutherford through, approved in 2001 for a church with space for 450 parishioners. Please consider the positive features of the development plan. You've heard about the conservation easement, the two conservation easements, which were preceded, of course, by the donation to the Farmington Land Trust. As Mr. McDermott alluded to, attractive architecture. Seriously, this is not prison block. This is not a monstrosity. This is not trashing the neighborhood. The building will shield the residential activity. They are first-class amenities. We've had this debate about whether it's walkable, but at very least, it is proximate. It is across the street from a major employment center where residents will work, many of the residents will work. And that, if you want to get into, use the environmental terminology, reduces the carbon footprint by allowing employees to live across the street from their workplace. Whether they drive or walk three-quarters of a mile to get there, or use the Yukon circulating bus, they are close to their workplace, and that is a very important planning goal, particularly in this era of environmental sustainability. We have, Mr. McDermott has pointed out, we're at the southern end of a very long, very large multifamily transition area between single-family and office and institutional. Obviously, you have a quality applicant, which is not in and of itself a reason for you to approve, but it's a reason certainly you should be comfortable that you're not getting something that is going to be unexpected. We have a developer with a track record of quality who is located in Farmington, and their track record speaks for itself. Heritage Glen, Almira Farms, 299 Colt Highway, Hunter's Ridge, Yorkshire Village, Westwoods. We do have, as we pointed out in January, the support of major institutions and entities in the area representing thousands of employees. Maybe they didn't endorse the specific building plan, but they certainly endorsed the need for housing proximate to the workplace. And that was Jackson Labs, Stanley Black and Decker, the Health Center, Carrier, Connecticut Children's Medical, and several leading citizens and former leaders of the town of Farmington. The applicant has, with limited success, but they have tried to reach out to the neighbors, respond to comments with plan changes, and be responsive with the conservation easements and the height reduction. And hopefully, not unnoticed by the commission, the applicant team has not responded in kind to a cascade of misinformation contained in four flyers which have been submitted to the record, which were sent out to 9,500 homes and 2,000 businesses, approximately 50,000 pieces of mail. We didn't take on the flyers one by one, and we're not going to. But where we want to end up, and where we'd like you to think about this application, is really by process of elimination. If you take everything that I just said and put that aside, what we are left with is this issue, this one single fundamental issue, which appears somewhat, I think unexpectedly, has risen to the top of the list. Does the visibility of the upper floors of the proposed building to at most two or three single-family homes on Pratling Pond Road, most at a distance of several hundred feet, justify the commission not approving this application? As we have seen, demonstrating visibility is a very precise, expert, technical undertaking. One needs to look at the camera angle, the type and the density of trees. You have to account for distance distortion. We credit the staff for its guidance and its review of the renderings and leading the commission to what was and was not accurate. And we accept the staff's conclusion. Limited visibility to the upper floors of the proposed building for two homes on Pratling Pond Road. But that begs the question, is visibility per se a basis for not approving this development? It might be an issue if we had one very large building, six, seven stories, towering over one-story, single-family home. But that is not the case in any way, shape, or form. Making all new buildings invisible to neighbors is a simply impossible criterion. It's not a criterion or an expectation of the special innovation zone because it is just something that could not be implemented. If you in your subdivision regulations or your zoning regulations, all new homes must be invisible to any neighbors. The town, nothing would ever be built. Multifamily and single-family are simply not incompatible uses that need to be separated, much less be made invisible to each other. No, there is no basis to color the visibility issue with the assumption about, with an assumption about the conduct of transient renters, that they will be disruptive to the quiet enjoyment of homes on Pratling Pond Road, especially given the internally facing and contained layout of the building. I would point out to you as a couple of notes, the Pratling Pond residents, when they acquired their properties, did not acquire a so-called view easement or a no-build restrictive covenant over 402 Farmington Avenue. They are not entitled, as a matter of law or as a matter of policy, to treat the development site as an undeveloped landscape buffer to the benefit of their properties. There has been some mention along the way here about impact on property values, but there has been no evidence. Property values are documented by appraisers, which is really an academic field. There's been no evidence in this hearing, no expert or appraisal testimony about an adverse impact on property values. Rest assured, if the intervenors or opponents had found a credible appraiser to conclude that there was a negative impact, they would have hired him and you would have heard about him. But that doesn't exist, and that's why you didn't hear it. A reality check. If, the reality is that if you build your house on a rear lot hundreds of feet from a street and move it and closest to Farmington Avenue, there is the possibility of future visibility of development, and that just simply should not be a surprise. We also respectfully need to push back very hard on this claim that zoning is a promise. Zoning is not a promise. It's not a promise of no development. It's not a promise that you won't see development on other properties that you don't own. And this has nothing to do with the rule of law, as Attorney Angworth suggested. But it's why we have setbacks and landscaping and dark-skY compliant lighting and all the other things that we do to shield one development from another. That's the requirement, not that one building be invisible to another. I also would point out as a legal and policy matter that zoning decisions are not what is called a plebiscite. It is illegal in Connecticut and most places around the country to submit a land use or zoning permit to a town-wide referendum. So 300 letters received in response to 50,000 pieces of mail is simply not a basis for denial. This narrative that the town has spoken, end of story, 300 letters, the census that Mr. Fetterman did of the letters received, that's not a criteria for land use. And if it was your house that was going to be voted on, you would see it somewhat differently. The applicant's obligation as a property owner and developer is to put forth an attractive, sensible, needed, non-intrusive development, which it has done. But once it meets that obligation, it has a right to approval. And that is especially so in this case where you have the proposed zone change that is tied to a site-specific site plan, and the parcel of development is right in front of you. So we're left with these three criteria for the special innovation zone. In harmony with the P O C D, Mr. McDermott said that I don't need to repeat it. Superior to existing zoning. Mr. McDermott covered this, and again, I won't, but except to say, the R80 is simply a remnant of a prior zoning code. It is a vast underutilization of the available infrastructure. The R80 alternatives put forth by Mr. Pennell now several months ago would have greater physical and environmental impacts than what is proposed here. And please don't ignore, as Mr. McDermott alluded to, but didn't go through the particulars, all the things in the B R zone that are either as a right or special permit. Hotels and motels, theaters, restaurants, fast-food restaurants, convenience stores, community buildings, which could be anything, schools, town-owned buildings and animal hospitals. Those are all permitted uses in the B R zone. And just a final note as to something we will charitably call amazingly inconsistent. This latest alternative from Mr. Pennell suggesting that the development be put on top of the landfill is completely opposite what we've been hearing from the intervenors for months, which is to stay away from the vernal pools. That their configuration along Farmington Avenue is right on top of the landfill and right on top of the vernal pools. I respectfully say that that really reveals that their concerns are not about visibility, because that would make it even more visible, and it's not about the vernal pools. It's about their perception of not in my backyard. And finally, in harmony with the actual development on adjacent properties. And finally, in harmony with the actual development on adjacent properties, as Mr. McDermott pointed out, the adjacent properties is not just Pratling Pond Road. On the east, you have Farmington Avenue and the medical buildings. North, Office and Multifamily Residential. Southeast, the closed landfill, the gas pipeline, the Public Works Facility. On the west side, you have the single-family homes at higher elevations, hundreds of feet away, and you're left with this limited visibility at eye level through the trees for two to three homes. Commissioners, visibility per se is not an impact. It's not a land use impact. It's certainly not an adverse impact, and it's not a basis for denial. So we're left with some speculation about why the neighbors are opposed. And we keep coming back to, it appears to be not in my backyard, or what they conceive to be their backyard, rightly or wrongly. But the insinuation of other reasons, and it's not right for us to speculate, but the insinuation is that it's fear of change. And if so, the one thing we can all count on, and this is absolutely demonstrated by what Mr. Sager and Mr. McDermott said about the track record of, not only of Metro Realty and this applicant, but the track record of multifamily residential next to single-family residential in Farmington, is that such the fear that this is incompatible is misplaced. This development plan will be built, stabilized, occupied, and it will become part of the landscape. It will become part of the fabric of the town and the neighborhood. It will blend in. It will be buffered and screened, and it will provide a long list of benefits to the town of Farmington. But after not very much time, you won't even know it's there. And I've seen this movie countless of times, countless times in my 40 years as a land use lawyer. Let me finish with just a very brief comment on the voting that you're about to undertake after your deliberations. Our understanding is that there will be one vote combined on the zone change and the site plan. And if that is approved, which requires four votes or more, then there will be a second vote on the height and the stories. And my understanding is that that is what Attorney DeCrescenzo is going to guide you to, and we do agree with that. I will say that the, on the intervention petitions, it's just a majority vote. And we expect that that, oh, there was a suggestion that we close the hearing on the petitions, vote on the petitions, and then if there's an acceptance of unreasonable pollution, that we allow the hearing to continue. I will just stay for the applicant's position that we don't believe that the hearing should remain open once it's been closed on the intervention petitions. We believe and we are confident that there is no reasonable pollution, and so we should, there should not be a discussion of feasible and prudent alternatives being necessary. So, again, thank you for your great patience in this very long proceeding. But it has been fair. We have done our best, and we've tried to be respectful. And we believe that we have provided the commission and the town of Farmington with a basis to approve this development. Thank you, Madam Chair, and that concludes the applicant's closing remarks.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would also like to give the commissioners a last spot to ask any questions, if you have any, starting with Patrick.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier. I was just curious, how long do you, how long you think or will it take to actually build this project from start to finish?
Eighteen months.
Okay. And then as far as ledge, how far below the ground was the ledge with the borings that were done, roughly?
Nine feet.
Okay. Now that's it for me. I was just curious about those two things.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
I have no questions regarding the intervener petitions.
Thank you. Matt?
I have no questions at this time.
Inez?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for me, just, I want to clarify for the commission that we are going to be moving to closing the petition and likely closing the hearing. So I know some said, none at this time. We're basically at a speak now and no hold repeat. You're welcome to ask questions like during deliberations, and I can clarify. But your ability to ask questions of the applicant and the intervenor is basically now, this is going to be us.
Okay, Michael Bulas, I do have some questions.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
There were a few questions brought up tonight regarding blasting timeframe, the photometric plan, and AC units on the top of the buildings. And I know that's been brought up prior, but I haven't really heard any answers on those. If anybody could elaborate.
The blasting, we are expecting 21 days of blasting, one or two blasts a day. The condensers on the roof, I will turn over to Kyle Richards, if I may.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
So Commissioner Grabulis, was that relating to the visibility of the rooftops or the sound?
Either or.
Okay.
Or both.
So the way that the building's designed is that there's a parapet. So the outside-facing wall is higher than the roof deck, where the rooftop units will sit. So the parapet wall is about two feet, three inches. But we're going to locate the rooftop units towards the middle portion of the roof, towards the center line. The pitch of the roof goes towards the courtyard. So by doing that, we make about a three-foot difference between the rooftop and the, and the top of the parapet wall. The condensers are under three feet. So we expect them to be completely screened from the visibility of the, certainly coming from the site, but also from the adjacent residences. As it relates to sound, you know, we're acutely aware of the ordinance governing noise generation with respect to abiding residential uses. It's a 51 decibel during the day and a 45 at night. That's measured at the property line at the point closest to the abiding home. You know, again, we're very aware of this restriction. We've spoken to our mechanical engineer, and, you know, we don't anticipate this being an issue. You know, sound attenuates over a distance and can be mitigated by obstructions, landscape buffers, and tree cover. But again, this is a, this is measured at the property line. Obviously, you have to be able to measure something to determine whether or not it complies or not subsequent to it being built. But we don't anticipate any issue with respect to adhering to the, adhering to the town standard at all.
It's Jeff Sager. May I add a couple of things, if I may? So first of all, the condensers, you know, the hypothetical that you heard was all the condensers coming on at the same time. That doesn't happen. And the other thing is that when they come on, and I won't use the right terms here, so indulge me, please. But you don't like, you don't just add the sound on top of each other. If one comes on and then another comes on, the incremental change of the second one is de minimis. And so it's not like, you know, two is twice as loud as one, and four is twice as loud as two. It's just a very small increment. The other thing I would say is that they don't have to go on the roof. That is the most environmentally friendly way, and we've gone way out of our way to do everything in such an environmentally friendly strategy as we possibly can. But you can put the, you can put the units on the side of the building so that they are not on the roof. It's not as energy, not as good in terms of energy conservation, but it can be done. We did that at 243 Steel Road in West Hartford. So if the roof is a problem, and then, you know, obviously, some would be pointing in, and some would be pointing out in a way, so.
And there are individual units for each unit?
Exactly.
And then just on the photometric plan, obviously, all the light will be contained to the property.
Correct.
Okay. All right, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
Adam Charity, Inez St. James. I have one question, please. And it's regarding lighting. Can someone tell me what dark-skies compliant lighting means?
Tom Daley, would you mind stepping in for this?
Yes, for the record, Tom Daley. So dark-skies compliant is a light standard in which, obviously, you know, there's a lot of animals and just people that have the interest in enjoying the dark sky and looking at the stars. So they are a standard. Basically, you want all the light to shine down. You also have heard a term possibly before, full cutoff lights. And these are done by, if you see a light fixture, basically, the light, the light, the fixture itself is actually embedded up in the upper portion of the light, so you cannot see it. So dark sky means push all the, all the light down onto the ground where you need it and not shine it up into the sky. So, and, you know, the old light was, you know, you'd get a lot of overshadow or something like that, but the new light technology is excellent in the sense that it's all going onto the ground where you're, where it's, you need it for the safety. So dark sky compliant is somewhat used the same as full cutoff. And we have provided a photometric plan. All the lights that we're proposing meet those standards, and we're showing zero-foot candles at all the property lines.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else? Hearing, none. We would move now to close, I would move to close the hearing on both petitions. And we have to process those two, those two different petitions.
Correct. And we'll take a motion, a separate motion for each. And just a reminder that the Fitchman has the original petition from January and the amendment from February. It's sufficient to reference it in that fashion, the exact date we have on the record, so. But I would like two motions, please.
What were the dates? I'm sorry, it's Inez again.
Sorry, so Fitchman was a, the original was January of 2021 and an amendment in February.
January 20th, yeah.
January 20th, I've got it. Okay, thank you. 2021, an amendment in February 2021. And Zaytoujin petition is February 2021.
Okay. Please correct me if I'm missing something, but this is Inez St. James. I make a motion to close their intervenor petition for the Fitchmans from January 2021 and amended, later amended in February 2021.
You have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, my second.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? That motion carries. We'll go to the second petition, please.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to close their intervenor petition for Zaytoujins from February 2021.
May I have a second, please?
Matt, my second.
Everyone understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we process the petitions.
Okay.
And do we have to read each segment and vote each segment? Or do we vote universally?
So we have Attorney DeCrescenzo on, and I'm sure he would love to provide some clarification on that for all of us. And I think he's got, you know, a few pointers or words of wisdom for the commission. So Attorney DeCrescenzo, if you want to address the commission, that would be a great time to do so.
Yes. When a 22A19 petition is filed, the petitioner bears the burden of proving the allegations, specific allegations within the petition, and the standard is reasonably likely to unreasonably pollute the air, water, and other natural resources of the state. It's really a two-part burden of proof. First is the petitioner must prove that the specific allegations of the petition are within the jurisdiction of the body it's presented to, in this case, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. And secondly, if it is found to be by the commission within its jurisdiction, then they bear the burden through documents and expert reports and testimony, and expert testimony of proving the specific allegations are reasonably likely to unreasonably pollute the air, water, and natural resources. The statute's been around for many years now, and there is a number of seminal cases that have been decided over the years by Connecticut courts that have defined the scope of a 22A19 petition and what it is and what it is not. And I think it's now clear, has been clear for some time, that the courts have limited the scope of 22A19 petitions, again, to specific allegations and specific proof that reach, that rise to the level of this substantial evidence test. You heard some commentary earlier by Attorney Hollister that generalized allegations are not enough and generalized proof are not enough. So your job now is to go through each element of each petition and decide two things. One is whether the specific allegations are within your jurisdiction. And if yes, did the proof offered by the petitioner rise to that standard of proof that I just mentioned? So what the Conservation Commission and Inland Wetlands Commissions did, which I think worked out pretty well and created a pretty good record, was to look at each specific allegation and discuss those two elements of the petitioner's burden of proof. And I will say that if the answer is yes on both to any of the allegations, then the burden will shift to the applicant to show that there is no reasonable and prudent alternative to the proposed activity. And that, but that burden does not shift until the commission finds that the petitioners have met their burden. So your job now would be to examine the Fitchman petition or the second petition, in any order you want, really, but go through each sub-paragraph, look at the specific allegations, and answer the two questions. A, is it within your jurisdiction, the specific allegations within your jurisdiction? And if so, has the petitioner met its burden? That the activity, the allegation referenced in the activity, or the activity referenced in the allegation, if done, will reasonably likely result in unreasonable pollution to air, unreasonable pollution to air, water, and natural resources of the state, and offered specific proof to the substantial evidence test standard of that. That's a lot of, a lot of words, but as spelled out in my April letter, it's really a very exacting process that the courts have required petitioners must go through in order to make out their allegations. Lastly, I would say that here you have, really, the application has two elements. One is a zone change, another is the site plan. They're intrinsically intertwined, because the site plan becomes the zone if adopted. But the zone change in and of itself, under a fairly recent Connecticut case, does not trigger a 22A19. does not trigger a 22A19 review because it, in and of itself, a zone change does not result in any physical changes to the property. That's the subject of the application. However, here you have a site plan which is tied to the zone change. And you would examine the site plan to determine whether or not the petitioners have met their their burden of proof. Here if any, for any questions or to guide you through any element of it. And I think you, at some point, looked at how Conservation and Inland Wetlands processed their applications. And like I said earlier, we we think they did a good thorough job of it. And if you were to follow something similar to that pattern, I I would, we would recommend that.
Okay. Here we go.
Okay.
Commissioners have any questions about what they just heard? I I want to make sure everybody understands where we're going with this. Because we're going to look at each individual paragraph and make a determination.
This is Matt Pogson. Are we going to do this as an actual, like, vote? Would you like to have us each make a, are we gonna, you know, each say aye and, you know, or do you want to raise hand?
It will be a vote on each paragraph.
Okay, very good.
We shall begin with Dr. Fitchman's petition dated January 20th. This is Statement 3A. "The activities proposed involve site alterations which are reasonably likely to discharge stormwater runoff pollutants, especially but not exclusively into two highly sensitive vernal pool wetlands, which, because they are located in a topographic low point, will receive stormwater and thus over time will degrade the habitat of vernal pool obligate species." We need, it is in our best interest to make motions in the affirmative and vote accordingly. You don't want to make a negative motion. You want to make a positive motion to approve and then a vote. So I need a motion on 3A, please. As presented.
But on the third, I'm sorry to be asking a question, but aren't we, so the first portion is, does our commission have jurisdiction, yes or no, or?
Is it in our jurisdiction? There are two categories that you that you evaluate
Okay.
to this statement.
Okay. So it says, am I make, it's Inez St. James, and I'm willing to, or I will take a stab at making a motion. Two separate things, though, right? So I mean.
No.
All right, I'm gonna, Attorney D. Crescendo, when we went through this with the Conservation Commission and Inland Wetlands, each commission member had an opportunity, basically, prior to the motion, they did, they in essence, did the discussion. They they went ahead and said, provided their thoughts on whether they thought it was in the commission's purview and whether or not they felt the burden of proof was met. And then after that discussion, then went ahead and did the motion. Is that?
That is, that is correct. There was a discussion on the paragraph. And then based on that discussion, a motion was made, and as the chair said, in the positive, so it's clear what a ye voted and a vote is.
Okay, so in this case, they don't have to have a motion on the table in order to, they can discuss this, get the consensus, and then put the motion forward. Because it's one motion for each claim.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll start discussion on that, on 3A, the one I just read. We'll start with Patrick. Mike, we'll move to Mike, just like we normally do. Patrick, any comments? Anything you want to talk about?
No, you know, I'd like to listen to the other commissioners because I'm, I am a little bit actually kind of lost on this one. Not lost, but it's, I'm not really sure where I stand on this.
Okay, Mike?
Um, I I do believe that this was in our jurisdiction, but I do not feel as though they met the substantial evidence test.
Thank you. Matt?
I do also believe that it is in our jurisdiction. However, I agree with Mike. I don't know that I've seen enough to show me that that was going to be an issue.
Thank you. Inez?
I also believe that this is in our jurisdiction and the burden of proof was not met.
Thank you. Keith?
I agree with everybody else at the moment. I I believe that this is in our jurisdiction, but I don't believe that the burden of proof was met in this case.
Okay, we have a consensus. Pat, Patrick, do you want to?
Yeah, no, yeah, I I I agree with both. I believe it is in our jurisdiction, but I do not believe that there was enough evidence.
Now we go back and have a motion to approve as presented. 3A, as read.
Sorry, it's Inez again. What are we approving, though?
So it was, again, we prefer to make this consistent with how we would do any application, make the motion in the affirmative. But then based on your summary that everyone just provided, so you would make a motion to uphold claim 3A of the Fitchman petition. Okay, is really what the emotion, the motion is. And then rather, so you're not upholding it based on the discussion, because everyone said no, that they don't leave, the burden of proof was met. So then everyone would deny, say no to the, for a vote. And then we'll move to the, to the next one. And then that, that claim would get denied. But we want all, we want everything phrased in a positive as an approval.
Then why wouldn't we go by each one and then either make a motion to?
We are going to each one.
So we could, the the issue becomes, Inez, if if for whatever reason you want to uphold one, then we've got to go back and do them one by one anyway. Right?
Okay.
So if you, if you uphold one out of the six or eight, then we've got to go back.
That's the missing link. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
It didn't make sense why we're dividing this, but now it does. And now the wording, it's still a challenge.
So it would be just to uphold the the claim of of three, Fitchman petition, item 3A.
I, thank you. This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to uphold the claim of Fitchman petition 3A.
You need a second, please?
Matt Pogson, my second.
Thank you. Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. That's not what the discussion.
Let me say this, a yes vote on a motion to approve paragraph 3A would mean that the commissioners found that the petitioners met their burden in that the allegation, the the conduct within the allegation is reasonably likely. A vote of no on the mo- on that motion would deny the paragraph of the petition, which would be consistent with the discussion you just had. So if you were to express your, to vote in a way that expressed your view would require a no vote on the motion.
Does everyone understand?
If if you want to make it clear, you could move to deny the allegation and, you know, then if you vote in favor of the motion to deny, then everyone, I think, would be on it's easier, it's more intuitive to do it that way.
So I'm gonna call a vote.
So right now, there's a motion and a second to approve 3A. So we can proceed in this course, or we can withdraw it and start over. Well, because if they wanted to rephrase it for denial.
I think we can proceed with it. I think everybody, does anybody have a question on which way it would go at this point?
Again, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Hearing none. 3A is denied. We'll move on to 3B. "Much of the site development is proposed within a 750-foot radius of the vernal pools habitats. Current vernal pool science indicates that a buffer of 750 feet should be maintained to protect the integrity of the use of vernal pool habitats by obligate species. The applicant has insufficiently documented how it plans, how its plan will maintain this integrity. The same conditions that we just used in 3A should be applied to 3B. So let's have a conversation. How do you feel about that?
So the first question is, do you believe it's in your jurisdiction? And then the second is, do you believe that they intervenor met their burden of proof?
Patrick?
Check your microphone.
What do we do to Patrick? He's muted.
Yeah, I just asked him to unmute. He's getting up, walking away.
We can come back.
Move on to Mike. We'll come back to Patrick. Mike, conversation?
Falls within our jurisdiction. Burden of proof is not met.
Matt?
I guess that it's under our jurisdiction, but I do not think that the burden of proof was met.
Thank you. Inez?
Same.
Keith?
Same.
Go back to Patrick. Is she gone? Do you want to light night?
He, curious, hang on.
Waiting on you, Patrick.
Sorry, it's all right.
Always having audio, audio issues.
Is he set?
Can you just unmute him?
I can't. All we can do is ask. We can ask to unmute, but we don't have the power to. All right, well, that's what we need, so.
We We're mumbling.
I'm all set with technical challenges this evening. I'm bad about myself.
Do we have Patrick back on yet?
They're tracking, trying to end their list.
Look, there we go. Patrick? We're working on 3B.
I know. I'm sorry. I lost my screen. I lost my mic and everything. Okay.
Okay, we're on 3B, and there's a consensus brewing with the commission that this may be under our jurisdiction, but there's been no burden of proof.
Yes, and I did agree with that. I tried to answer that, and it didn't come through. Sorry.
Okay, there seems to be a consensus. I'd like a motion, please.
Excuse me, I'm chuckling here. I think I'll just continue the same way I did before.
Correct.
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to uphold claim 3B as presented.
You have a second, please?
I will also continue the same way. This is Matt Pogson, and I second.
Thank you. All those in favor? In opposition?
Thanks.
Abstention? Motion is denied. We'll go to 3C. "The applicant has done insufficient site investigation to determine that the site does not support endangered, threatened, or species of special concern, as the applicant has only referred to the Connecticut DEEP Natural Diversity Database, NDDB, which is neither comprehensive nor definitive in its contents. Additionally, there is no indication that the NDDB contains any information regarding the site and therefore even relevant, and therefore even relevant." Discussion on this one, please. Patrick, Mike, Matt, let's go down the roll.
Yeah, I believe it's in our jurisdiction, but I do not believe that they provided enough evidence or substantial evidence.
Thank you. Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof was not met.
Matt?
Actually, gonna mix this up. I don't think that it's in our jurisdiction on that one, but I actually think that they made a pretty decent claim on it. So I'm not quite sure what to say there, but I'm a little backwards, I guess, on that.
Thank you. Inez?
I think it is within our jurisdiction, and the standard was not met.
Keith?
I'm answering honestly. I I am not sure that this is in our jurisdiction, jurisdiction, but I don't believe that the burden of proof was met either way.
So is the consensus applicable to a vote? I need a motion?
This is Inez St. James.
3C, please.
Sorry about that. This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to uphold claim 3C as presented.
Is there a second, please?
Sorry, Matt Pogson, second.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. Move on to 3D. "The detention basins proposed for the project are close enough to the vernal pools that they pose a real threat of acting as decoy vernal pools, which are reasonably likely to attract vernal pool obligate species, which will use the basins as breeding sites, which will cause a failure of the breeding cycle." Discussion.
Yeah, Patrick, here, I don't know where I stand on that as far as, as far as if it's in our jurisdiction, but I don't believe there was enough evidence.
Thank you. Mike?
Kind of the same, like, I just falls within our jurisdiction, but burden of proof is not met.
Matt?
Matt Pogson, I agree with what Mike just said.
Inez?
Well, I don't think it's in our jurisdiction, but I also feel that the burden of proof was not met.
Thank you. Keith?
Don't feel that the burden of proof is met. The sort of thing I I think is not really in our jurisdiction, but.
Thank you. There's a consensus. May I have a motion, please, on 3D?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to uphold claim 3D as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, opposed?
Aye.
Right. Aye.
Motion? Is that right? Motion failed. I thought I heard somebody speak. Is that right? Motion failed. I thought I heard somebody speak.
No, it was, I was all under our.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to three E. The proposed project will unreasonably disrupt the wildlife habitats to the north and south of the construction footprint, which are connected by an essential wildlife corridor, as further described in a report I commissioned Dr. Michael Clemmons and which is submitted here with dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Discussion?
Patrick Carrier, it does fall within our jurisdiction, but I, again, the burden of proof is not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Matt?
I think it's in our jurisdiction. I'm not sure that the burden of proof was met.
Inez?
Same.
Keith?
I agree with everyone.
The consensus brings a motion, please.
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim three E as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, my second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. We'll move on to three F. The proposal is not in harmony with the overhaul, overall objective of the plan of conservation. It's not superior to a possible existence zone zoning regulations for the portal. And it is not in harmony with the actual or permitted development of adjacent properties as further described in a report commissioned by Dr. Michael Clemmons and which is submitted here with dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Conversation?
Uh, Patrick Carrier, I um, do believe it's in our jurisdiction, but I do not, um, I do not believe the burden of proof was met.
I don't believe this is a, um, within our jurisdiction. This is more of a statement.
Um.
Yeah?
Yeah, I don't know. I think my computer is breaking up a little bit. Sorry. Um, I actually do believe that this is in our jurisdiction and I do believe they, they made an argument. A burden of proof for this.
Inez?
I agree. It's within our jurisdiction and burden of proof was not met.
Thank you. Keith?
I think this is in our jurisdiction. I don't believe the burden of proof is met.
Thank you. There's, there seems to be a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim three F as presented.
Have a second, please?
Pogson, and I second.
All in favor?
Aye. That's Matt Pogson.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. We're gonna move on to uh, Dr. Fishman's intervention.
Amendment.
Amendment dated February twelfth. And there are two, is it?
Two, yep, it's two A and two B of the amended Fishman petition. Correct.
Okay, the first one is the applicant proposes a storm water management regime that proposes no reduction in runoff volume for any storm event. And as runoff is being directed into wetlands increases volumes, increased volumes are reasonably likely to cause erosion within wetland area. Discussion?
Uh, Patrick Carrier, in our jurisdiction, but uh, burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
In our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Matt?
In our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Inez?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Keith?
I agree with the fellow commissioners.
There is a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim two A from the amended Fishman petition as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
An abstention? Motion is denied. We'll go to two B. The stormwater plan for the site inadequately provides for renovation of stormwater quality and pollutant loads and generally does not utilize best management practices to address stormwater quality. Discussion?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I, it is in our jurisdiction, but burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Matt?
Matt Pogson, I agree with what Mike and um, Pat both said.
Inez?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Keith?
I'm in agreement with everyone.
Thank you. There's a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim two B from the amended Fishman petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. Thank you. That completes the Fishman petition. We'll move on to
Yes, I'm good. I'm sorry.
The Zaitunjian petition. And if you have that in front of you, it, we're going to the fifth section, five A. We have a number of these to do, so be patient with us. Five A is the first. According to Stephen Trinkus, P E of Trinkus Engineering LLC, in his letter to the commission dated February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, filed contemporaneously here with, the proposed stormwater management system is inadequate to reduce non-point source pollutant loads for reason, reasons set forth in his letter. Moreover, he finds the stormwater management system does not reduce the increase in runoff volumes, which will cause adverse impacts, a down gradient of the charge point, as he describes. Conversation?
In our jurisdiction, um, burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Matt?
I agree with both of them.
Inez?
Me too.
Keith?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five A from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second that.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion is denied. I'm going to five C. Note that there is no five B, so we're moving to five C. In his report to the commission dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Michael W. Clemmons, Ph. D., discusses the ecological connections present on through and around the development site, including that the vernal pools that lie within the Tennessee Gas Pipeline easement are but stepping stones in a mosaic of interconnected wetland habitats that pool along the base of Talbot Mount. He describes that the wetlands on the site have direct connections north and south along the base of the ridge, as well as ecolo- ecological connections with other perched wetlands on a higher elevation upon the Trap Rock Ridge. He describes the documented richness, richness of the wetland-dependent amphibians and reptiles that have been recorded from this swamp system. Conversation?
Patrick Carrier, um, in our jurisdiction, burn and proof not met.
Like a bullis within our jurisdiction, burn and proof not met.
Matt?
In our jurisdiction, but burden of proof not met.
Inez?
Same.
Keith?
I agree.
Have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make the motion to uphold claim five C in the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
Thank you. All in favor? All against?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion is denied. Thank you. Five D. Dr. Clemmons describes a wildlife corridor which is rivet, driven by a proposed development resulting in habitat fragmenta- take fragmentation, habitat fragmentation such as is proposed is one of the primary threads to habitat degradia- degrade, degradation and local extinction, exti- I don't know, extinction of population of sensitive species. I apologize for that. But let's have some conversation about it, not the diction, but the content.
That's up on the screen. They were reading along.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, in our jurisdiction, um, but burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, in our jurisdiction, burner proof not met.
Matt?
I'm not sure it's in our jurisdiction, but I say the burden of proof was not met.
Inez?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Keith?
I agree with Matt. I'm not sure it's in our jurisdiction, but either, either way, I don't believe the burden of proof is met in this case.
All right, there's a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five D as presented in the Zaitunjian petition.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion's denied. We'll go to five E. As presented, Dr. Clemmons identifies the following impacts are likely as a result of the proposed development. Further degradation of the two vernal pools, the severing of the interconservation area connection linking primary conservation areas to the northeast and southwest through the wetlands mosaic, he describes. The danger of the proximate stormwater basins serving the development acts as a as decoy vernal pools endangering the wood frog population and as a result, water quality, quality. Conversation?
Patrick Carrier, uh, in our jurisdiction, but burner proof not met.
Mike?
Like a bullis, I don't believe this is within our jurisdiction.
Matt?
Um, I'm not sure it's in our jurisdiction, but I don't believe the burden of proof was met.
Inez?
Not within our jurisdiction, standard not met.
Keith?
I agree with Matt and Inez. I don't believe it's in our jurisdiction, but I don't believe the standard is met.
There's a consensus. May I have a motion?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five E from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor? All against?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. The proposed, we're going to five F. The proposed development is not consistent with the Farmington's Plan of Conservation and Development, P O C D. That, among other things, recognizes the aesthetic and environmental values of hillside areas which have been maintained in part through low-density residential development, which also limits an erosion. Plan of Conservation and Development Update two oh seven, adopted two oh eight at section six. Discussion?
Um, Patrick Carrier, in our jurisdiction, but burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Same.
Matt?
I believe it's in our jurisdiction and I do believe that they made, um, were able to reach the burden of proof on that.
Inez?
Yes, within our jurisdiction, standard not met.
Keith?
Within our jurisdiction, but the standard was not met.
There appears to be a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five F from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor?
Aye, Matt Pogson.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. We'll go to five G. The proposed development cuts deeply into a hillside and encroaches into the interconnection wildlife corridor between critical habitat areas. Discussion?
Uh, Patrick Carrier, uh, in our jurisdiction, but not, um, burden of proof not met.
Mike?
Like a bullis, within our jurisdiction, burn and proof not met.
Matt?
In our jurisdiction, burn and proof not met.
Inez?
Within our jurisdiction, burden of proof not met.
Keith?
I agree with everyone.
There appears to be a consensus. May I have a motion, please?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five G from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
May I have a second?
Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. Moving on to five H. The applicant has failed to establish that the proposed development is superior to a plan under the existing zoning that would be less destructive to the environmental functions and values of the site. Conversation?
Patrick Carrier, um, in our jurisdiction, but burden of proof not met.
Thank you. Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, burn and proof not met.
Matt?
In our jurisdiction, and I believe they met the burden of proof.
Inez?
Within our jurisdiction, standard not met.
Keith?
Then our jurisdiction standard not met.
There appears to be a consensus. May I have a motion?
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five H from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
This is Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor?
Matt Pogson, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. Thank you. We'll go on to five I. The application represents an activity that will unreasonably pollute the national resources. This, the wetlands and watercourses within the jurisdiction of the commission. The commission has jurisdiction over the determination of whether proposed plans meet the criteria and standards set forth in the regulations and the P O C D. Discussion?
Patrick Carrier, in our jurist, standards not met.
Mike?
Within our jurisdiction, standard approved not met.
Matt?
In our jurisdiction, standard approved not met.
Inez?
Same.
Keith?
I agree with the group.
There appears to be a consensus. The, uh, motion is warranted.
This is in S. James. I make a motion to uphold claim five I from the Zaitunjian petition as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion is denied. That does complete. The processing of both petitions. Therefore. We can close on the applications of petitions are denied. Correct?
Correct.
So just one vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is in S. James. I make a motion to close the application.
Okay, we're closing the hearing on the application.
Close, yes, the hearing on the application.
And Pogson, a nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
No, I flipped the page, find out what's next. So uh, I would ask mission number, so I would respectfully suggest that we will not vote on this matter tonight. But that the commission members take the opportunity to. Review documentation that have been presented with respect to the application. And um, be prepared to discuss this, the a um, motion or resolution at the next meeting. And uh, if you're finding you're missing information or need help finding information that has been presented. I am here to assist with that. And I can clarify anything that's on the record and as attorney DeCrescenzo will remind me. You can't add anything. The hearings closed, so we know additional information, but I can make sure that uh. Have the information that you need to make your decisions.
Uh, Shannon, MicroBullis, just want to let you know I'm unavailable for the next meeting.
All right, that's a good piece of information to have.
Shannon, uh, Matt Pogson, uh, I just have a list of some proposed conditions that I think that I'd like to be able to share. But I don't know um, under the circumstances, how we would go about doing that. I mean, normally it would be uh, during discussion and we talk about those. You know, in person, I suppose, but if I have, you know, something that's written, would that be something to send to you? That could be shared with the commission or should that be done during? How would that be done in these circumstances if there's conditions that may be added or proposed?
Outing. Attorney DeCrescenzo, you wanna? Shed some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think you're now that you've closed the hearing, you're in deliberation phase. And if a member of the commission has a list of proposed here uh, conditions for the. Uh, for the commission to consider, I think it would be appropriate to send it to staff and staff can circulate it. Uh, to all commission members and you know, post it um, uh, on the uh, on the website for for all to see. Now, keep in mind, the applicant and other interested parties cannot comment on those proposed conditions. But the commission would be. It would be to the advantage of the commission, given the complexity of this application to have as much time as it needs to consider. Things like proposed conditions and other aspects that that the commission will deliberate on at the next session. So I don't see any problem with circulating them amongst commission members, understanding that you cannot discuss. The proposal with each other outside of the next meeting because. That back and forth would may constitute an illegal meeting and you certainly don't want to inadvertently do that. So yeah, you can circulate it, uh, send it to staff, staff can circulate it. But you can't talk about it with each other outside of the uh, public meeting.
That's that's kind of what I was figuring. So that's um, I can send that either tonight or tomorrow, whatever's best for you.
Excuse me, this is Barbara Brenman. That would apply to every commissioner that might have conditions they would like to see. Apply.
Absolutely, absolutely, and also.
That right?
Yes, and also questions to staff, of course, you know, everything goes through Shannon and Shannon's the gatekeeper of of all information. You know, to the members of the commission and Shannon can interpret the record, what's in the record and help you find things in the record. And as she stated, no one can add to the record, but certainly you have the benefit of the staff expertise to. Review and interpret what's already in the record.
So I say to all the other commissioners, including myself, if in this next. Few days you have come up with some creative ideas, please share them with Shannon and that way she'll get everything to each one of us. Because we each one of us may have a different idea. So if we're gonna share one, let's share them all.
Yeah, and I would again recommend that Shannon, you just post everything on on wherever you've been posting things so that it's all available publicly. So that the public is aware of the questions that are being asked and things like that.
Okay. So noted.
Oh, you Shannon.
No, that's all right. That's uh, you know, I've these academic exercises have been fun. So uh, one other thing, if commission members could in the next day or two, take a look at your schedules. Obviously, uh, Commissioner Garulis let us know he's not available for May twenty fourth. If anyone else is not available for May twenty fourth, that heads up in advance is going to be much appreciated. I'd also ask that you look out to, I believe June seventh is the first meeting in June. And let me know your availability on both of those days. We do have some breathing room with this. We don't have to make a decision at the next meeting. It could go to June seventh. So we can, let's see who's available and when, and then we'll go from there. Okay, so, okay. So I think that's all I have. Attorney DeCrescenzo, is there any other closing information we need from you before we move on to something else this evening?
Well, you may have covered this earlier, but you know, May nineteenth, all the rules change in terms of remote meetings and hybrid meetings and in-person meetings. Uh, and we, no one has an answer yet as to what the state of that will be on May twentieth. I suspect that the governor and or the legislature will will give us some guidance um, in advance of of May twentieth. But um, last time it took until five minutes to midnight to do that, so uh, we'll keep you posted. As to what type of meeting you're able to have next time.
Thank you.
Alrighty, everyone, we uh. Unfortunately, commission members, we're not quite finished this evening, so uh. I'm gonna close all the four or two items down and Catherine and I are switch places. We're gonna try and move through this as quickly as possible.
Shannon, Matt Pogson, just a quick question. Do we have to have any motion to continue or we're good?
No, because you closed. So actually you, the last motion was to close the hearing. And so now we're into our next group of days with respect to uh, deliberation and providing a vote. On a decision on the application. And I got a let's thirty-five or sixty-five days. I know that's a big difference, but inland wetlands goes one way and TPV grows the other, so. Sandy saying sixty-five, so. We're not, I hope hopefully we don't need sixty-five days, but we'll uh, we'll work through that.
Moving on to the next public hearing, which is Mark Watson's application for special permit for his poultry. At seven Fairview Drive in an R twenty zone.
Hi, Mark, are you there?
Poor guy.
I'm here, yes.
All right.
What a night you guys are having, huh?
Well. I have your application up on the screen and I um, allow you to present uh, your application to the commission.
Okay, so we're looking to uh, put in a small uh, chicken coop. It's four feet by eleven feet. We wanted to raise six hens. It's going to be along the back property line where that woodpile is, that woodpile is moved and so. That's going to be the location for the um, uh, for the coop. We did send out uh, letters. We've we've gotten some feedback from. Who's agreed to do it, but um, or has given a blessing. That's the size of the coop. It's four by eleven. And um. Yeah, uh, so that's what we're looking to do. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about it.
Question is, you have questions?
Uh, Patrick Carrier, you know what? My internet connection is just for some reason acting up. You said you did reach out to your neighbors?
So yeah, we we, there was um, seventeen neighbors, so everyone was within two hundred feet of the property line. Had uh, certified letters sent to them and um, so most of the neighbors we are in regular contact with. Uh, reached out and had no objection. I would imagine that if anyone had an objection, they probably would be contacting the the um, the town, but um. Uh, so it was what I had said, it was six hens, um, no roosters. This is the the coop that we want to build. Four feet by eleven feet. It's going to be on the property line. Uh, there's a fence that's an fenced backyard, so it'll be. Um, seven feet off the property line in the back, kind of in the middle of the yard. That's what we were hoping to do.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
Mike?
Uh, what's the height of the fence?
Eighty inches. Eight zero. So it's uh, I I'm so six, four, six, it's about six feet.
Okay.
Eight inches, yeah.
And you said the coop was four feet tall?
Four, four feet wide by eleven feet long by eighty inches tall.
Okay. Okay, so the fences, what what's the fence?
Six feet. Fence are, that's just the fence on the property line. So I just mentioned the fence because that's the location. It's gonna go along.
I'm just, I'm just curious the height of the fence that you have.
The height of the fence is probably. I'm six, four, I could just get my eyes over it, so I'd say probably six feet, three inches off the ground.
Okay, and no roosters?
No roosters, no.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Matt?
I think Mike covered it. No questions.
And is?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Is there anyone, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone online that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application?
If you're interested in speaking out in the public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom function and I will allow you to unmute yourself. I'll give you another call. If you're interested in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. No hands are being raised at this time.
Thank you. Is there any further comment from the applicant?
Uh, no, no further comment.
Thank you. Any further concerns from the commissioners? Hearing done, I'll close this public hearing. Let's have a motion, please.
This is in S. James. I make a motion to approve the application for special permit from Mark Watson. To raise poultry at seven Fairview Drive, R twenty zone as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second, Matt Pogson.
Everybody understand what we're voting on?
Uh, quick question. Normally we put the one year um, referral that they come back on this. Do we need to add that in the motion?
Isn't that part of the application? No?
It's usually a condition. Roosters, well, no roosters. Do we just need to make a quick amendment to add that?
And it's one year check-in or if there are?
Then you have to go back and have the the maker of the motion amend the motion, please.
Okay. Eleven twenty-four, let's see what I can do with this. Just kidding. Uh, this is in S. James. I um, amend the motion. To say um, that I make a motion to approve the application for special permit from Mark Watson to raise poultry at seven Fairview Drive, R twenty zone. Um, with um, a um, request to um. Report within our, in one year uh, to check in to ensure that there are no noise concerns. Or any other comments from the neighbors.
Will the secondary accept that amendment, please?
Matt Pogson, accept that amendment.
Thank you, Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, Patrick Roy's application for special permit for expansion of home in excess of twenty-four hundred square feet. And an accessory apartment in excess of six hundred and fifty square feet at twenty-three Bonny Drive and in R twenty zone.
Uh, Madam Chair, MicroBullis, I will be recusing myself from this application.
Thank you. Is John Vibbert? Still here?
Uh, unfortunately, yes.
Guess what, John?
You're up to bat.
You're up to bat in place of Mike.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Patrick, uh, I have your application up on the screen. You can present it to the commission.
Uh, good evening. Um, my application is for uh, it's kind of two-part. I'm I'm adding. I'm requesting to add eight feet to the back of my house. Um, and close a um, walkway in between our garage and house. Um, to make into a mudroom and on the back of our garage. I'm adding uh, an in-law apartment for my mother and father-in-law. My mother-in-law has a medical condition that we like to um, be closer and be able to take care of her. And uh, we've gone through the variance committee uh, for a variance on a four-foot. Intrusion into the ten-foot side yard. Uh, which was uh, which was approved. I've also gone through the inland wetlands commission for the um, wetlands. Concerns to the back of the house and that is also uh, passed. And we're coming to your approval for the uh, excess of over six hundred and fifty square feet of the uh, in-law apartment. Uh, is what is in question. Uh, it would be eight hundred and ninety-six square feet, just under nine hundred square feet. With a kitchen, uh, bedroom, bathroom and a walk-in closet. I've met or talked to all the uh, neighbors in my immediate area, uh, done my certified letters. As well as um. My biggest or my closest neighbor uh, to the to the left of our house uh, is in favor of the uh, of the addition. If there's any other questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, Patrick Carrier, so did you say there's anybody that you know that is opposed?
I have not heard of anybody who is opposed to it. Actually, if you look at the uh, drawings from the uh, there's. Yes, that one there, the. The proposed front of the house is actually what my house looks like right now, with the exception of where the cursor is. It'll be a carport. That's the only thing that's going to be kind of added. You really won't be able to see it because it's going to be. Ninety feet back from the front of the house. Uh, it's 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 a lot harder to see from that side of the house anyway, because of the. Foliage and bushes in the area. It doesn't change anything to the front of the house uh, sightwise. It's not not really going to change much from from the front of the house.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mike? But I'm sorry, Mike, Matt?
I don't really have any questions. I was um, looking at the houses around it on the street and honestly, I think it'd be perfectly in character with everything. I guess. I think it's. Anyways, I, I think it's fine.
Thank you, Matt. Yep, same. It looks like it's like blending in with the garage and, yeah, it, it looks, it looks fine. It doesn't stand out to me.
Keith?
I have no issue with this and no questions. Thank you.
John?
No questions or issues.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone online in this Zoom meeting that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application?
The public hearing is open. If you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. Last call for, if you're interested in speaking in the public hearing, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. No hands are raised.
Okay, Mr. Royce, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, thank, no, all set.
I will close this public hearing and look for a motion, please.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to approve the application from Patrick Royce for special permit for expansion of home in excess of 2,400 square feet and accessory apartment in excess of 650 square feet at 23 Bonnie Drive, R 20 zone as presented.
Matt Pogson, and I second that.
All right, there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Go on to new business. And I'm probably going to crucify these names at this hour of the night.
That's okay. We can go with first names.
Thomas and Agata. Kraszewski and Trojansky accept an application for two-lot subdivision of 344 Meadow Road in R 40 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Tomas Kurchevsky and Agata Troyanovsky for a two-lot subdivision of 344 Meadow Road, R 40 zone and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
May I have a second, please?
Matt Pogson, and I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. VTEC BAC accept an application for special permit to construct accessory structure in excess of 30% of the principal building per section, per Article 4, Section 30, 24 by 28 foot garage at 1815 New Britton Avenue in an R 20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from VTEC BAC for special permit to construct accessory structure in excess of 30% of the principal building per Article 4, Section 30 at 1815 New Britton Avenue, R 20 zone and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
Matt Pogson, and I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On new business three, I will not be voting. I will read the, the application. Farmington West Estates accept an application for six-lot subdivision of Whitetail Run off Snowberry Lane, A H Zone, and schedule a public hearing, recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Farmington West Estates for six-lot subdivision of Whitetail Run out of Snowberry Lane, A H Zone, and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
Matt Pogson, and I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Number four, Town Plan and Zoning Commission accept an application for text amendment to Article 2, Section 31G for special innovative, special innovation floating zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Town Plan and Zoning Commission for text amendment to Article 2, Section 31G for special innovation floating zone and schedule public hearing with recommended hearing date of June 7th, 2021.
Matt, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We're not busy or anything, huh?
Planters Report?
I have nothing to add besides name.
Angel. We do, although, have to approve the minutes of the April 26th Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26, 2021 Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Matt Pogson, second.
All in favor? Just a personal thank you to all of you for an evening, again, well-spent for the town of Farmington.
That's right. Thank you.
Good night, have a good evening. You're excused.